Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission Meeting. We are commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings, and to make recommendations to the governing body on planning items. Please note that the governing body rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the Planning Commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the governing body. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the governing body next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. Some of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the Planning Department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then we will receive public testimony. Comments are limited to four minutes. For agenda items that do not involve public hearings, public comment is allowed provided the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Again, comments are limited to four minutes. Finally, at the end of regular business, the commission will entertain general comment regarding matters relating to commission business, provided that the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Amanda, please take the roll.
Mr. Lally?
Here.
Ms. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Heron?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Nager?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Mock?
Here.
Ms. Hannan?
Here.
We have enough for our quorum.
All right. Next is the approval of the minutes for the June 16th meeting. I would entertain a motion on that.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion on that one? Seeing none.
Ms. Hannan?
Aye.
Mr. Mock?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Minutes pass.
Next is any declaration of a conflict of interest or ex parte communications by members of the commission.
On the Washburn Tech North, my firm is working on that. I am not working on that and can remain impartial, but just wanted to be clear.
I know Mr. Debacker. I know him professionally, but from my understanding, he's selling the property, so it won't affect my judgment, but just wanted to disclose.
And then I have heard some positive, negative, and just asking for information, some comments on the PUD over on Farallon, but believe that I can make an impartial decision. Seeing no more, we're going to move on to action items. The first action item, which is by Ardent Real Estate Group, my understanding is that one is being pushed out because there was a change to what they're asking for.
Yes, they're changing what they're requesting, and so we have to publish a different legal notice, so that requires that it be, goes on the next agenda.
All right. Great. Then we'll move on to the second action item, which is PUD 25-8 Blackburn Subdivision Number Three. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Nager. Okay, so this is, the applicant is requesting a major amendment to the Plan Unit Development Master Plan for Blackburn Subdivision located at 4100 Southwest 40th Street. The size of the addition is approximately 1.68 acres. As you can see from the image, it's south on Gage, south of I-470, close to the city limits, city boundary. So a little background, the major amendment is needed for expansion of the business south. Original zoning change occurred in 2000 to allow for the use of Alana Garden Center. It was amended again in 2009 to provide for a larger area of operations. The proposed area will need to be annexed, and that annexation review is happening concurrently alongside this zoning case, and the property will need to be planted too as well. A little bit of zoning. Like I said earlier, it's in more of a rural area. To the north, you have R1 single-family dwelling district. South is residential reserve. To the east, you do have a residential, a single-family neighborhood that's located inside city of Topeka. And to the west, you have undeveloped and vacant R-R1 land. The subject property is designated in the UGA residential area of our Land Use and Growth Management Plan. The area is meant for future primarily urban residential neighborhoods. So partly the reason why we are, why this PUD took place back in 2000 and why we were doing these amendments for them is to recognize that it is in the UGA and that the straight rezoning of heavy commercial C4 would not be appropriate for this area. So that's a little bit of the background for why we're proposing this major amendment to the PUD. And finally, we have comments from city staff. The only major comments we had were from traffic staff recommending that Southwest 40th Street will be required to be extended to service the parking lot for the proposed structures. The public street will be required to terminate with a vehicle turnaround, and a sidewalk should be installed on the south side of Southwest 40th Street. So taking that all together, staff is recommending approval of this major amendment for the PUD. And take any questions, Gabby.
Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Pearson?
Who will be absorbing the cost of the street, of the extension and the sidewalk?
The applicant will be paying for the cost.
Thank you.
That extension is on the west side of the intersection, is that right?
Yes, it'll be on the west side of Gage.
Any other questions? All right, next we move on to a presentation from the applicant or a representative.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners Kevin Holland, Cook Flat and Struggle Engineers, here on behalf of Schindel Lawn Landscape and Green Pest Control. And fortunately, their business is growing and they're looking to expand, and a good way to expand is new building just on the south side of their existing property. They understand that staff's recommendations don't have issues with them, and they're here to answer the questions if you have them.
Any questions from commissioners? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to any public testimony. If there's anyone who's a member of the public who'd like to speak on this specific application, please feel free to come up. Again, just checking, anyone who would like to speak on this one? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public testimony. Then moving on to any discussion by commissioners? Any motion?
I motion to approve per staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we can move on to the vote.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Mock?
Aye.
Ms. Hannan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Moving on to Action Item Three, Z-25-6 Northwest Kansas Avenue and Reno, or Rio Street. Handing it off to staff for their presentation portion.
Tonight, I am presenting Z-25-06 North Kansas and Rio Street. This proposal is to rezone this piece of property on North Kansas Ave, just south of Soldier Creek and the levee, from R1 single-family and C4 commercial to M2 multifamily. It's just under 12 acres. At the moment, it's used for agriculture and one manufactured home down there on the corner of Rio and Kansas. And tentatively, the developer plans to build roughly 190 units of affordable multifamily So currently, the character of the area, there's a mix of uses. There are two mobile home parks nearby, some single-family residential, mostly along Rio Street to the south. Some of those longer skinny parcels that are zoned I-1 do have single-family homes on them, and then there's a variety of light industrial and commercial uses. The future land use plan, the future land use map identifies this area for large commercial development. This is obviously not a large commercial zoning classification that they're proposing, but we still feel that it fits with the general need for housing outlined in the plan and the market study. Based on all these factors, we are recommending approval. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Not seeing any, we will move on to the presentation by the applicant or their representative.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Kurt Peterson, here on behalf of the applicant, Marion Development Group. They have 22 years of experience and over a half million dollars of experience in doing projects just like that, which is quality housing that people can afford. We think this site is a wonderful site for this, as staff has said. Particularly have some residential housing just across the levee there to the north. And while this is just zoning, so we're not here to talk about the, we tried to get in a little bit with our neighborhood group, just speculating what the plan might look like, access, things like that, and you're free to ask that tonight, but this is really just here for the zoning itself, and we would follow with a detailed plan that would come through staff in the city. So we appreciate staff's time on this and their recommendation, but tonight I'm here if you have any questions for me at this time.
Any questions from commissioners? Not seeing any, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next, we will move on to the public hearing for this project. If there's any member of the public who'd like to speak on this application, please feel free to come forward. Just so you know, we limit public comment to four minutes. There's one timer that will go off. It's a one-minute timer, so.
I just have a quick question. I'm Claudia Elkins, and I was just curious, where's Marion Development Group from? Where are they out of? Are they local?
I believe they're from Kentucky. They do projects around the country, but they're based in Kentucky, I believe.
Okay. Just curious, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who want to speak on this one? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion by commissioners? Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we can move on to the vote.
Ms. Hannan?
Aye.
Mr. Mock?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Then next, we move on to Action Item Four, PUD 25-9 Washburn Tech North Campus.
Okay, thank you. This is a request by Washburn University. They're amending the zoning from C4 Commercial District and I-1 Light Industrial to a PUD for U-1 University District uses and C4 Commercial District uses. The property is located at 2240 Northwest Tyler Street, comprises 8.3 acres total. The PUD will contain two areas. Area One comprises 0.76 acres for a future commercial pad site. Area Two will comprise 7.47 acres to allow redevelopment of the old Kmart building for a VOT Tech campus by Washburn University. Some background on the zoning, the existing zoning districts of C4 Commercial and I-1 Light Industrial already allow the proposed use of the business in VOT Tech campus. The rezoning was made at the request of the property owner to further restrict allowed uses on their commercial pad site as a contingency to be placed on the sale of the property. So the zoning change here restricts C4 uses above and beyond what the zoning, what's typically restricted by the C4 district. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting. There were two attendees there who did not express any opposition. Subject properties are located along a commercial corridor, an area extending from North Kansas up to Northwest Tyler Road. A single-family neighborhood lies west of the site. East of the site is commercial uses, retail, and a hotel. South of the site is existing building supply and garden center. The building itself has been vacant since 2016. It's designated commercial in the future land use plan. However, the plan itself, the Land Use and Growth Management Plan indicates, also indicates that less intense zoning districts may be appropriate within community commercial areas when they allow a stepping down in the intensity of land uses, such as in this case. Additionally, the plan doesn't preclude the mixing of commercial and non-commercial uses when these uses support adaptive reuse and retrofit of existing vacant buildings, such as in this case. Based on the golden factors and the findings in the staff report, staff is recommending approval, subject to the four conditions in the staff report. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Then we'll move on to a presentation by the applicant.
Evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Kevin Holland, Cook Flat and Struggle, once again, and a beautiful project. We always love infill and repurpose. That's exactly what this is. We have a Kmart that closed in 16, and now it's going to be a beautiful Washburn Tech campus, so here for any questions, and I think it'd be great for that area of the
Any questions? I do have one question. Is this just additional capacity compared to the other campuses, or is it going to be materially different?
They have not determined it completely, but I believe it's additional location in town that they can offer similar services that they have. I don't believe they've talked about growing their services, but at the same time, they're open to, I guess, the market that Washburn Tech would drive them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the public hearing for this application. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak on the Washburn Tech item, please feel free to come forward. Again, if any member of the public would like to speak on this one, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for this one, which means that we move on to discussion by commissioners. Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Mock?
Aye.
Ms. Hannan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next is Action Item Five, PUD 25-6 Farallon Acres Development. So my understanding, I was out sick the first time we took a look at this, but my understanding is that this was approved and then sent to the council and they remanded it back to us.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. The item was remanded back from the governing body with some specific instructions that are outlined in your packet, and staff is ready to review those things when you're ready.
Okay, go ahead.
There we go. Okay, so some of this is review, but this is a proposal to enlarge the existing planning and development area that is currently identified as C2 use on 605 Southwest Farallon and rezone 601 Southwest Farallon. It's not included in the current PUD zoning from C4 Commercial to become part of the PUD, and it'll be part of that C2 area, which I'll show you in just a moment. So just to revisit this, actions taken to date, Planning Commission heard this, held a hearing, and recommended approval on May 19th, 2025. Immediately following that, protest petitions sufficient to require a three-quarter vote of the governing body to approve were submitted. That was checked to make sure they were sufficient. They were. On July 1st, the governing body considered this item as an action item and remanded it to the Planning Commission with specific instructions. Most of these instructions are specific to traffic concerns. One of the instructions is to allow public comment, so that is why this is open to public comment tonight, because of that instruction. And another one of the instructions was to address or go back and look again at three of the golden factors. Golden factors are the basis for decisions on rezoning applications and conditional use permits and planning developments. Okay, so this is going to describe the current zoning. The current zoning includes 1.3 acres of C2 zoning. So when I say C2 zoning, that means when you have a PUD master plan, there is a use classification that's identified in that master plan, and in this case, 1.3 acres within the master plan was identified for C2 uses. It's large enough to accommodate a small to medium-sized convenience store, for example. And also, the, just under a half of an acre of that land is outside the current PUD zoning, which is Zone C4, which now contains a auto repair shop. That's going to be incorporated into this. Uses permitted by right in C2 zoning include, but are not limited to, convenience store with fuel pumps, auto repair, restaurant with drive-through service, and other uses. So under the current master plan, 4.26 acres of it is allowed for M3 development, multifamily residential development, up to 40 units per acre. Under the proposed zoning, it will increase Areas One's C2, Area One's C2 use to 4.77 acres, including the 4.49 acre auto and build repair shop at the corner. The PUD met its need to allow a larger convenience store than feasible under the current zoning. Under this proposed PUD master plan, it decreases the areas, Area Two's M3 use and M3 potential from 4.26 acres to 1.28 acres. So this is a concept site plan that's been submitted. This is not specifically part of the master plan, but it's here for demonstration purposes, and the master plan reflects the things that are on this concept master plan, or concept site plan. This includes a 6,000-square-foot convenience store, fueling islands for 10 cars, and four fuel islands for semi-trucks, and no trucks scale. One thing to clarify here is this is not a truck stop. This does not meet the definition of a truck stop. It has, a truck stop has overnight truck parking typically, has showers and other services for trucks. An example of a truck stop is Loves at Lower Silver Lake Road and Brickyard in North Topeka. So this site plan is revised slightly from the previous plan. The truck islands have been reduced from five to four, and the truck scale has been removed. Just for point of clarification, it has four fuel islands, but that is enough to serve five trucks at the same time. This is an example of a Maverick convenience store in Lincoln, Nebraska. Maverick is really a big player, I'd say, west of the Rockies, but they have, they're making inroads in the Midwest and have developed two stores, two other stores in Kansas and are developing in other states in the Midwest. Surrounding zoning and land uses. So one of the factors that's within the golden factors is for consideration in a rezon application is surrounding zoning and land use. So to the north of the subject property, it's right of way for the interstate and Southwest Sixth Street. To the west, it's Zone C4 Commercial. That is currently vacant, but it has the rights to develop as, under C4 zoning. And the lands on the south side of Seventh are Zone C4 Commercial, and a lot of the land along Farallon, on both sides of Farallon, is zoned for commercial uses. These areas include a mix of, there's a convenience store with fuel service, there's vacant land. The vacant land is immediately on the, to the east, on the east side of Farallon from the site. And also, there's auto repair. There's a, there was a massage therapy service in the building across the street, I don't know if that's still there. That's considered a personal service, like, it's similar to, like a hair salon or nail care, that type of thing, nail salon. And there are also some other office services, or excuse me, office uses on the south side of Seventh. So traffic volumes and required improvements. So one thing I should clarify, this is just very brief discussion of the traffic volumes. In my presentation, I'm not going to address a lot of the traffic issues, so. a lot of the traffic issues. So Kason Schwalm, who is civil engineer for the developer, is here, and he will summarize that information. But what this is, what this is saying is, these are the peak increases in traffic volume, and these are the sites that are entering and leaving the site. So this counts the trips entering and leaving the site. So one thing that should not be confused with is any increase in traffic volume isolated to a specific intersection, because traffic goes to the site from multiple intersections. So just to clarify that. So per the traffic study, and as is recommended, the required improvements include a new traffic signal at Southwest Seventh and Fairlon, a resurfacing and widening of Seventh, and an extension of a median on Fairlon south of Sixth for right-in, right-out only for entrance to the site on Fairlon. So golden factors, let me, allow me to explain a little bit about the golden factors. So they're called the golden factors because there was a case in the seventies, Golden versus Overland Park, and that was ruled on by the State Supreme Court. And the outcome of that was determining that there are these factors, they call them the golden factors because they're based on the golden case, and they are factors. There are eight of them. You could have other factors that could be considered. One of those factors, by the way, is a recommendation by staff. That's one of the factors. So what that tells me is, we need to make a recommendation, and so that's what staff has done, is we've made a recommendation. What the city council did in their remand order was to ask the planning commission to go back and make, take a closer look at three of the golden factors. The first of those is character of the neighborhood. The surrounding area of the site contains automobile intensive uses, a continuum of care residential, that's the residential area or residential development on the northeast corner of Sixth and Fairlon. Continuum of care just means that it provides care for assisted living. So if someone wants semi-independent living, but it also has things like, or services like, like what people typically think of when they think of a nursing home, so more skilled nursing care. So that's what, that's on the northeast corner of that intersection, there are two hotels in the area, and there's vacant land. The vacant land is on the, is to the east, on the east side of Fairlon. The land on three sides of the property is zone C-four for intensive commercial uses. On the north side is Sixth Avenue and ramps to and from I-70. The proposed convenience store and site development will be an aesthetic improvement to the site. The increase in traffic will likely affect the current character of the area. So some of the adjacent land uses, this is just a map showing the area around it. These are some of the developments that surround it. There's the convenience store to the east of the site. There, what you can see here is there's an auto repair, I think it's more auto sales now, that's, this would be at the southwest corner of Seventh and Fairlon. You can see the hotel on the other side of the street, and you can see the hotel just to the south there. And then on the lower left, there's the small building used to provide, used to house massage therapy, and then there's various types of small office buildings. At least two of those office buildings are occupied by people that are professionals that provide behavioral health services. This is just more photos showing what the area is like. The one in the upper right is a view looking south. There's the Valero convenience store gas station on the left. The one on the lower left is the continuum of care residential. The one on the lower right just gives you another view of Fairlon looking south. The other golden factor is the suitability of the property to the uses of which it has been restricted. So this is a often misunderstood factor, golden factor. It's really, what it's asking is, is the property suitable under the current zoning? There are cases where the property is not developed, you can't even develop the property under current zoning realistically. That's not really the case here. The property is suitable for multifamily residential use and commercial use allowed under the current zoning. But consider that the property has been zoned for multifamily residential use since two thousand and twenty. Previously, it was C-four. It was all C-four. C-four, if this area was zone C-four, the planning commission would not even be seeing this project, because that would be a use that's allowed by right. So the lack of development progress since two thousand and twenty might be some indication that the current economic challenges of multifamily housing development make it difficult to develop that on this property. There have been two different housing projects that have not come to fruition on this site. So the other golden factor is the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare by destruction of the value of vector property as compared to the hardship imposed upon the individual and owner. So this is really a balance test of sorts. This is balancing what there is to gain by a denial of the project or zoning against the, what's to gain from approval of it. It's balancing, it's also a balance between the rights of the property owner against the rights of the general public or the, or surrounding neighborhood. So public benefit, some of the public benefits include the services provided by the proposed land use, the productive use of the site, and the aesthetic improvement to the site as a result of the development. A potential public harm is the increase in car and truck traffic. The hardship to the owner by denial is the loss of opportunity to develop the site for commercially viable land use. So again, the golden factors, they're called factors because they're factors to be considered. They're not criteria. They're not stated as criteria. They're not, you're not, they're just factors for consideration. And so it's really a consideration of all those factors that's the basis of your recommendation and the governing body's decision. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. Again, the other, the traffic concerns are going to be more fully addressed by the applicant.
Any questions for staff?
I just had one quick one, and I couldn't find it in the packet. What is the definition of peak hours AM and PM? What timeframe is that?
There's a timeframe in there, and I will, I will direct that question to the developer. Usually, it's about an hour in the evening and an hour in the morning, but I'll, they can answer that specifically.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
I just have one. There are a couple of gas stations across the street. What about this potential development is similar, and what's different compared to those?
That is a good question. So this might be a good way to look at those. So if you look at this map on the south, the southwest, excuse me, southeast corner of Sixth and Fairlon, that's a fairly small convenience store with fuel pumps. It's on less than an acre. I think it's about six tenths of an acre, I believe. And that's a pretty small site for a convenience store with fuel pumps. Many of them are over an acre in size. The other convenience store is a little larger than that, and it is, if you can kind of see where Motel Six is, it's directly across the street from Motel Six, and it's, it's on the east side of the property. That's on a similar-sized site. So one of the differences, the differences between those and the proposed is the number of fuel islands, both for passenger vehicles, and those others do not have fuel islands specifically for semi-trucks. The sites aren't really large enough to accommodate semi-trucks very well. And the convenience store itself, with the proposed convenience store, is pretty large. It's almost six thousand square feet. That's a pretty large convenience store. I think most of them are probably between one and two thousand square feet. It's pretty common.
And then a different question. Currently, a good portion of that is zoned multifamily. Am I right in thinking that if, if this were to fail, that they, someone would legally be allowed to build multifamily that would include maybe like one hundred to one hundred fifty units? That would be kind of the alternative?
So the zoning allows forty units per acre. There's four acres of that, so you do the math, under sixty units. The, one of the things that's difficult for that to happen is when someone develops piece of property, that to provide for stormwater detention a lot of times. They also have to provide off-street parking. So it might be challenging to get the forty units per acre, but if they can design it in a way to do that, they can do that. And so that's what's allowed currently.
All right.
And, and also, the one-point-three acres would be large enough to accommodate a convenience store, or drive, restaurant with drive-through service, auto repair, things like that.
Any other questions for staff?
On the adjacent convenience stores, have you heard anything from them? Any comments on the proposed development?
We have not, I am not aware of any comments we've received from any of them. Potentially, the convenience store directly across the street is affected by the traffic improvements that are required with this project. I believe they have signed up to comment tonight.
On the signage, which we didn't really talk about tonight, but kind of talked about last time, there's an existing pylon sign out at the highway that is more than what's currently, taller than what's currently allowed. Is that correct?
That, if you could give me a minute, I need to look up that one.
Sorry.
I think I know the answer to that, but I don't want to be wrong. I'll give you the right answer, the correct answer.
I have a question that might be able to be answered by some other folks while you look for it. If there was a light put in there, I guess that would be a number of lights at Sixth, Seventh, Tenth. Is that an atypical density of spot, or stoplights?
I would say that's a question for our engineering division, and Joe Harrington, our engineering staff, is here, answer that question.
Good evening. Joe Harrington, project manager and interim traffic engineer. And I wouldn't say it's typical, but there are locations that there are dense like that, such as Twenty-first Street from Wanamaker to Fairlon. There's quite a few of them. It's not typical, but there are locations where we do have traffic signals that close together, such as Twenty-first Street from Wanamaker to Fairlon.
All right. All right. Mike, have you been able to find that?
That's right by Topeka West, and...
Okay, I have an answer for, it's a little more complicated than the ECI. So that sign is fifty-five feet tall, and I believe it's probably a little under three hundred square feet. At the time that was put in, that was allowed anywhere in where you have C-four zoning. The property, like I said before, it was previously zoned C-four. There was a major rewrite of our sign code in twenty nineteen. It changed things quite a bit. It reduced the maximum height and size of signs, but it did provide some option for signs at a highway location. Under C-four zoning, that sign conforms to the current C-four, what's allowed in C-four zoning. C-two zoning, it doesn't conform to that. Under C-two zoning, the maximum height of a highway sign is thirty-five feet. So because of where that sign's located, it's difficult to see it. There's a lot of landscaping along the interstate, rather than try to ask KDOT to cut down all the trees, which they're probably not going to do. The recommendation is based on that sign being justified just because of where it's located, and it's difficult to see that sign. Other than that, there are limits on the signage on the site that, so, for example, the signage that's allowed on the site is consistent with what's allowed under C-two zoning, not C-four zoning, with the exception of it would be allowed to have one additional monument sign on Seventh. The justification for that is the truck traffic, the multiple entrances. It would be good for circulation to give them the option of having directional signage.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Not seeing any. This, the, procedurally, it works the same as what we've been doing, right? Even though it's been sent back, like, next is the applicant, then, all right?
Yeah, it's the same procedure. They just, they're probably getting one more time to go over those instructions.
So I thought I just want to be extra sure I wasn't doing anything wrong. All right, so then, yeah, next will be the applicant or their representative.
Good evening, commission and staff. My name is Josh Ray. I'm with Maverick. I'm the real estate development manager for the area. I missed out on your guys' meeting last time, but Nick and Kason are back. I just want to say that we're very excited to be a part of the community. Staff has been tremendous to work with. We've certainly got to spend a lot of time together, which is always good. I'm happy to share more about Maverick and our business. You asked a question earlier about maybe operationally, what's different from us from, from smaller convenience stores. You know, we've been in business for almost a hundred years now. We're a family-owned operation, and our first stores were a lot smaller. What we've learned over time, as, as society's progressed and changed, is that people, convenience is our name, we're a convenience store. They like room. We want room for those vehicles to safely move through the site. We want parking spaces, people able to come up and easily pull in and get what they like, and then, and leave in a safe manner. One of the reasons why our buildings are bigger is we do offer a full kitchen. We have a mix of made-to-order food as well as grab-and-go, so there is a full menu offering available, and so that takes up a little more room. We also believe in big, clean restrooms, and so that is a big thing that takes up space in our stores as well. So that, just to kind of further define that question that was asked earlier, and I'm happy to answer anything else about who Maverick is, what we believe in. Again, I cannot probably stress enough that in our business, there are a lot of different ways to run it, and some do it very, very well. Loves and Pilot, they, I don't really like to talk about my competitors a whole lot. I don't really say that we're competitors with them. They have a very different business model than we do. We do have eight hundred stores in, I believe we're at twenty-two states right now. We have a strong presence in Iowa and Missouri, and we're growing westward that way, and we have a very strong presence out west, and we're kind of mean in the middle in Kansas. We do have two stores open. We have a third one under construction, and we have plans to do several more over the next few years. And we really believe that Topeka is a great place for us to be as we enter and make our mark in the States, specifically on that I-70 corridor. There are a lot of residents and local travelers that there's just not offerings for this modern type of convenience, and we would just love to come be a part of the community and be a part of that. So again, happy to answer any questions on that stuff, if you want the nuts and bolts. That's why Nick and Kason are here.
Any questions from commissioners?
We'll get to the fun stuff. I'll bring Kason up. How's that sound?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. Kason Schwalm with Holson Engineering on behalf of Maverick. I just wanted to address your peak hour question, going back to that real quick. So really, it helps us quantify basically the most intense time of day, be able to model, I would say, the worst-case scenario, so we can plan accordingly and situate the improvements that we need to at an appropriate time and location. So if you need further clarification, I can try to expand.
And just what is that out?
Oh, typically, you're looking at more of your, in the morning, it's, you know, you're going to work, dropping the kids off, seven-thirty to eight-thirty, and then the afternoon would be typically your four to five, four-thirty to five time range, or four, four-thirty to five-thirty time range. I'll try to address any questions as they come up here, I'm sure.
Any questions? Any questions? Mm-hmm.
I think he was also going to summarize the responses.
Yeah, hopefully in your packet.
If there are any other questions. So, you received today a letter from the applicant that responds to the questions asked by the governing body and their instructions on the remand.
Mm-hmm.
It was emailed to you today? If you would like, we can probably get it up on the screen if you'd like that.
Yeah, sure, if, if possible.
Yeah, we can kind of run, run through these one by one if you'd like to. Again, these are just comments that were, you know, topics of discussion at the previous governing body meeting that we were in attendance at, and these were emailed to us, and we wanted to address these appropriately for each one of you. Number, number one, honestly, a big item that's been a topic of conversation the entire time is safety, specifically with the location of the middle school just down the street from us. In, in the responses here, we tried to address, you know, kind of the different phasing of the project, obviously during construction, you know, you're, you're going to have a closed-off area so that work can happen. Obviously, there will be improvements out in the public right-of-way along Fairlon and 7th Street that would necessitate some lane closures or, or some traffic safety devices installed at that time to help navigate those times. And then, once schools opened, or, excuse me, once the convenience stores open and operational, you know, those improvements that you've seen in your traffic study report, including the signal, crosswalk installation, you know, your pedestrian crossing devices, your push buttons, that, those type of items will be in place to help with that pedestrian flow and make that place a little more walkable than what it currently is. I mean, I would like to point out, and there, there has been some city data that's been shared here recently, we did not conduct a full pedestrian count of the area, but city, city data does show that school-aged walkers on our side of the street in this area, I think the total number was one. So, the improvements in place would hopefully help address that, that one concern. We can move on to item two. 7th Street, there were just some questions about who's responsible and who would be taking, taking the full force of that cost to improve 7th Street. Easy answer is Maverick's taking on that full responsibility. Tax, tax dollars are not a part of this conversation. That's, that's the easiest answer I have for you.
Can I, can I ask questions as we go through the questions?
Sure.
Okay. So, can you just kind of help remind me and everybody, you're reconstructing 7th Street, and so it'll be two-lane with a turn lane when you get to the stoplight, when you get onto Fairlon?
So, eastbound on 7th, as you're turning back into Fairlon, it'll still be two-lane, no separate right or left turn lanes. From our traffic study, it did not necessitate the full build-out of a, of separate lanes to go northbound or southbound. It was kind of a marginal, marginal number that didn't really provide too much benefit, and, and the spacing to fit full three, three full lanes in that area would be tough between the existing right-of-way. So essentially, you would have, I would say, a couple oversized lanes to be able to help make those movements, and the idea would be for vehicles that are turning right and heading south along Fairlon, you know, those vehicles are going to have to queue behind those vehicles that are still trying to turn north.
Yep.
So, that, that's the idea behind that.
So if you added the turning lane, like you were saying, to, to go north, or to go south, either way, would that alleviate some of the stress that I think everybody's feeling, or you're saying it won't have any impact?
Per TIS, the difference was very marginal.
Okay.
There was not a good justification. And, guess we can move on to three. And again, it was, it was brought up tonight, signal coordination, obviously. We already have in, in the works, you know, coordination between our proposed signal at 7th Street and 6th. The, the topic of conversation would be those next inter, few intersections south. At the current time, I mean, we don't have that design done, we don't have any design done, right? We're just here to kind of bring this item to you and, for topic of discussion. But that will, that can be addressed, and, you know, we can, we will run through every aspect we would need to with, with that signal coordination phasing, to make sure that we keep that traffic flow as smooth as possible. And then, obviously, you know, those results, we get in front of cities, city engineering staff for a final review and buy-off on. Item four, we're good to move on. The increase in traffic, kind of taking a specific look at our trip generation for sites specifically. You can kind of see, we have a table included here that kind of breaks down your, the difference between passenger cars and trucks. And again, I want to, you know, kind of reiterate what was kind of brought up previously. The total number of trips you see, I mean, we, we provide a breakdown here, so it kind of helps to make sense, but that total number, you have to kind of divide it by two to think one vehicle creates two movements, you're in and you're out. So, it's not, I, I know there's topic of conversation around inviting 1,100 trucks to the site daily, that, that's not correct. Just wanted to, to address that. Here, you can kind of tell, in, from Mike's presentation, the total number of trucks in and out during that AM peak and PM peak, as you can see, is that 34 to 36 number. And to be able to address each one of those trucks, there are five fueling lanes. In addition to the five that can fill, you've got five spots that can pull ahead, give sufficient room for that truck to pull into that stall to continue the next, the next fill, and you've also got queuing behind those trucks at, at Pump Island. So essentially, you can think of it as, I mean, I know circulation's not going to stay stagnant the entire time, but there is 15 spots there that you can essentially allow for filling and queuing simultaneously.
Good question for you. For the traffic increase, when you were looking at existing conditions, were we using that as a base, just the empty site, or something different for the comparison?
So, at, at the onset of everything, we go out and conduct the ADT counts, the average daily traffic counts, get that data, and then our traffic engineer, I, I will preface, I'm not the traffic engineer that completed this study, so I am the civil engineer involved in the project. They'll take that data and interpolate it and apply it per IT requirements and, and items like that, I guess. They'll, they'll be able to use rates that the, the trip generation manual allows us to use for our land use, and that's how the, the application for the truck stop, and truck stops is a way we have to generalize the term to be able to account for those diesel pumps behind the store. The main focus is the convenience store with passenger fueling options out, out in front, and from, from the existing to the developed conditions is what you'll see through the study.
I had another question. So, you made the comment, 1,100 semi-trucks a day is not the count. So what is the count?
So, half of that, 560.
560 a day?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, that is using a very, I'll say, inflated trip generation number per the IT manual. Again, that, that puts a onus, you know, concern on the developer of this typical land use. They get the full brunt of having to meet these requirements per IT rates, which is escalating, I'd say.
Maybe a follow-up question, so we have peak hours, which you're designing to worst-case. It's not always worst-case, we all understand that. So, you know, let's say it's 2:00 in the afternoon, or let's say it's 11:00 a.m., or whatever, how, how far off that peak is, does that come? What, what would be a normal amount of trucks per hour outside the peak?
So, I don't have a clear answer for you.
Okay.
Obviously, the 36 would be worst-case, and you could scale down from that.
Yeah.
So...
I have a question. So, the existing traffic study, was it, when you say entering the site, was it, was it only taken out in front on Fairlon? Or does it include the amount of trucks that would need to be coming on and off of the, or coming on from the on-ramps?
So, as, so we do have, as part of, as part of those ADT counts, so, you know, they, they were able to break down the classifications of vehicles that utilize the on and off ramps on, onto I-70. The exact statistics in front of me, which it is in this traffic study, I don't have that number, but I do have a table in our packet here that points to the intersection of 6th and Fairlon there, and shows the, the overall volume through that in your AM and peak hour, and shows the increase, well, it's the comparison before and after the development. So that's the, that's the total traffic added to that intersection in those worst-case times.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Can I just add something to respond to Commissioner Mal's question? If you're looking at the traffic stays attached to the staff report, it'll show you where the traffic counts are, which intersections. It starts on page 11, figure 2. So that gives you an idea of the scope of where the traffic was analyzed. And figure 2 is the existing conditions, and then, when you get to figure 6, figure 6 and up, it looks at existing and proposed.
Okay.
And it'll give you an idea of the counts of each of those intersections.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's any more questions on that item, I can move to 5. So, again, this was a topic of conversation at the governing body meeting. There were questions about the improvements to the bridge over I-70. And again, just kind of pointing to the packet that, that's been provided. At the current time of our study, we're, we're not aware of the timeline or feasibility that, that KDOT has and their intentions along the bridge. The intent per our traffic study is to basically show, the simplest way to boil it down is, even if the Maverick development was not to occur, there are existing issues related to capacity and queuing at your turn lanes, southbound, that would, to address, would require some type of widening of the bridge to increase queuing and capacity, and basically pull the taper further away from the eastbound I-70 on-ramp and then the 6th Street intersection. And then there's some level of service data that has been provided in the table. Yeah.
Sorry, I keep asking questions, I'm just thick, I guess. So, I'm just trying to understand what you just said. So you're saying the, the bridge across I-70, Fairlon Bridge, already, already needs to be widened with the current traffic?
Yep, yep. Our, so, capacity in those turning lanes do not meet the most intense times of day. That stacking does not quite fit.
Okay.
So, that would necessitate the improvements to the bridge.
Okay, and this'll, we're going to add traffic, so that'll make it worse.
But the idea would be for KDOT to improve the existing condition?
Yeah, you guys aren't building the bridge, I get it.
And, and any future user?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure I understand what we're saying here. Thanks.
Six, I might skip over, since we already kind of addressed that with the separate right and left lanes off of 7th back on the Fairlon, unless we want to jump back to that.
I may have missed it, did you talk about right turns on red pedal, or is that?
So there, there's currently no restrictions for, for right turn on red. So, set, so, number seven, there were some questions and comments about kind of what was going on with 6th Street and who was responsible for that, so, access to street, KDOT does not control 6th Street, that is a city street. And that access, we, we have vetted out that, I would say, to, to no end at this point. I mean, that has been a topic of conversation since the very beginning, since our neighborhood meeting, when a lot of these great suggestions were brought to us. And some of the, you know, limiting factors of that have been shared with city staff, but just to kind of summarize the, the main items quickly, so, there's a very limited space between the end of your bridge along 6th Street in front of our site and that intersection at Fairlon and 6th. So to be able to try to fit a separate right turn lane, a pull-off lane for the Maverick site for those trucks heading, for any vehicles heading eastbound, you have to be able to provide a taper length queuing, and then, that movement into the site, there's not sufficient room to make that happen without creating more stress very close to the intersection there. And then get, then again, going along with that, queuing at the intersection at some type of red light movement, or red light along 6th, that queuing and that stacking eastbound along 6th could pose, since it's just a single lane through currently, you know, you could start to see that traffic back up to that drive, and then, that, that problem then starts to back up into your site, just making the, the issue even more so. And then, any southbound traffic off, off the interstate, if they, if they were to turn and go westbound on 6th to try to enter the site at that point, and that queuing is there, then you're creating a gridlock-type situation, where there's really no flow happening in either direction. And then, one item we, I did include in there was, we don't want to promote truck traffic west along 6th Street. We don't want to put them back at the roundabout, we want to get them back on the interstate as quick as we can, and away from any potential conflicts with pedestrian vehicles. So, I, we do feel like that would, that would promote that movement a little bit more so if that access was, was on 6th Street. Any questions on that one? Item eight, the question was brought up, have this would affect kind of the movements and change of lanes between the turnoff Fairlon and Highway 75. So, really, in, in any movement leaving our site, going east or coming west from 75, I mean, you're going to stay in that outermost right lane to take your exit and get on or off the ramp. So there doesn't seem to be a severe change of lanes that's going to occur, I mean, not to say every once in a while it won't, but again, as you pull on that, pull onto the I-70, you're already going to be in the correct lane to take that next exit, so. And then, Mike did a great job of addressing the golden factors, and there were just some notes in, in this letter about that. If, we can't address each one of those again, but it'll just be kind of summarizing what, what Mike has already pointed to.
Any more questions from commissioners for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, something I should have mentioned earlier. We received, as you know, many written comments. I didn't count them all, but read through them, a lot of them. And those were all scanned in and shared with you all. Those were printed and they are in front of you. I'm saying that just to be, that way everybody knows that if they submitted written comments, those are all being shared with the planning commission. In addition, Tom Gendrick, who also provided written comments, he gave us this tonight, and that is also in front of you. And that's, that's a fairly analytical review on his part. And that's in front of you tonight.
I believe we're done with the presentation with the, from the applicant.
Thank you.
Unless, final comment?
I didn't want my teammates to have all the fun. Nick Caffill, I'm also with Maverick. I'm the Site Development Manager, working directly with Jason and Josh. I'm the designer of this site. Just a couple of points. Staff talked to it a little bit. I don't think we hit on it enough, but it needs to be talked about. Most of this discussion is about trucks. It's definitely about traffic. But we're not talking about vehicular passenger vehicle traffic much at all, and understandably, trucks are trucks. One thing that, that we can't clarify through IT, 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 Casey said, it, it allows us to use these classifications, it forces us to use these classifications. We don't have a choice. Once you say you're going to allow for a semi truck on your site, it calls it an over-the-road eighteen-wheeler. I also don't have the, I, I can't break those down. I don't have the data to, to show you what that is. But what we can say is, all of us know what, we, we use some, some other names today, whether it's a loves or whatever. Pick your big truck stop out on the interstate that is a large fifteen-acre site with fifty or a hundred trucks, parking spots, a maintenance facility, bathrooms, or showers, all the stuff that go along with what an over-the-road trucker, if you will, wants. That's not to say we won't have any of those folks at our facility. We're allowing for those movements on our facility. But with three full lanes through, those are the full, so we have positions for five trucks. Three of those can fill on both sides, over-the-road trucks with tanks on each side. The outside lanes are one-sided. One would be a driver's side, one would be a passenger's side, all of which exist in a commercial truck, from a straight truck to a dump truck, to me pulling a, a two-car trailer with my three-quarter-ton diesel truck. That's what we all use for those. It, it can affect the data, but it has to affect site size versus site size when we're dealing with an under-five-acre site, and we're dealing, comparing that with, and getting mixed in. It doesn't change the traffic data or discussion. It's, it's what we're boxed into talking through and discussing. But just from a, from a use standpoint, I think it's important to just understand the intricacies of that conversation. Anyway, that's all I wanted to add. Appreciate all of you very much having us again, and we'll answer more questions as they come up.
Any questions for? Thank you. All right. Then, we have, with that concluded, the presentation by the applicant. Next would be the potential public comment. My understanding is that whenever the city council remands something to us, the default is that there is not public comment, but that the city council specifically requests that we do do public comment, and it is up to our own discretion as permission, whether or not to do it. So, I guess I'll ask if there are any thoughts on that.
Do we have to make a motion?
I, I believe that formally, we do have to make a motion.
I think we probably should. You probably have a good idea, right?
Yeah.
So, I'd make a motion to do public comment.
Second.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Then, any discussion on that motion? Go ahead. Uh, for, roll, or?
Mr. Lully?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Mock?
Aye.
Ms. Hannan?
Aye.
That motion passes.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, so we, then we'll have public comment. So, public comment is limited to four minutes per person. There is a yellow light and one timer that goes off that will signal that you have one minute left. Then, there's a second timer, which is red, which will signal that your time is up. I think that covers it. But with that, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this one? And feel free to just come forward, and then as the next, or as the previous person wraps up, the next person can just come up after them.
Hi, my name is Tom Gendrup. I live two doors down from Pleasant material, man, on Sixth Street. I'm every bit as old as I appear. I'm old enough to have grandchildren that attended Landon Middle School, and starting this fall, great-grandchildren. I'm also pretty much out of touch, and so I wasn't aware of this until about three weeks ago. I was shocked that we would consider truck traffic in a, in this area with so many, what are described by the city as sensitive facilities. So, there are three areas that I want to touch on. In four minutes, I can't get into the detail. I trust that you've been reading the materials that I've sent in, and you, the booklet describes more in total about how roads are affected by truck traffic. One of my larger concerns that I, again, I don't, not have time to get into in great detail, is an understanding of throughput and dwell time, and how it is affected by the amount of buffering that you have for a semi to go in, the distance between entrance and the light. The thing that you can be assured of, and we heard a few minutes ago, that the, that five-hundred-and-sixty trucks coming in, five-hundred-and-sixty trucks go back out, the eleven-hundred, or the, yeah, eleven-hundred-and-twenty, am I doing my math right? Trucks is from the Sixth Street back to the exits. That's where you see that number. That number crossing through Sixth Street is a truck every one-point-three minutes on average through the day. Couple thoughts. We need to understand the throughput capacity and how it'll affect the Sixth Street intersection. The industry standard for studying throughput, throughput capacity, National Association of Truck Stop Managers, the Trucking, uh, Trucking Association of America, and I probably have that wrong. I have it correct in the, in the reference. The stuff I'm going to talk about are fully referenced in the materials, but I can only touch on them. Twenty minutes is the standard total time in a, in a facility that truckers also go in and go to the restroom. They also may buy. That's a stan, industry standard dwell time. That's three intervals per, per pump an hour. Five stations, that's fifteen. We're talking about, at peak hour, thirty-six. So, the requirement at peak hour is thirty, to handle thirty-six, the capacity is going to cause some interruptions, as were indicated. But I want to share with you, it's gonna be every day. It's gonna be every day, and recommend that you ask for a, a study and move to that. What I really want to talk about is harm. The golden rules that, rules that we talk about to discuss harm. I trust that you understand what the American Heart Association says about seniors who already suffer from hypertension, the effect of truck breaks on their lives. There is very little mention of, of Landon Middle School, or my grandson. Look into the detail of the effects of noise on their ability to learn, and especially for kids with special needs, from truck noise. Finally, these, this whole area is already designated as a sensitive zone because of the churches that are there. There's a church right across, right across Seventh Street, the Capital City Church. There's a church on the Nazarene, the Two North Church, the schools. These are protected. You can give me two more minutes. I only need one.
So, with, with, with as many people as we're having tonight, we're gonna keep it moving.
Well, we have a responsibility to represent those folks.
Hello, my name is Sarah Bremer Parks, and I'm in one of the sort of non-distant office buildings that's been mentioned as kind of a general rule. But I wanted to share with you, we, this has actually brought us really close together as an office building group and owners of all the businesses on Seventh Street. And I'd like to ask each of that group to stand. We have Keystone Mental Health, we have Florence Crittendon, we have Kansas Nebraska Convention of Southern Baptists, we have the Capital City Baptist Church, we have On Target Financial, we have American Tax Service, Synergy System Consulting, which I, my husband also represent here, the Hague Oil Company, which owns the Amoco at Sixth and Fairlon, Valero at seven-oh-six Fairlon, also a family-owned gas station, and the Home Six Motel. So, we together are very concerned, and we highly recommend to not put this Maverick, or to change the zoning that would allow the Maverick business. We really welcome Maverick to Topeka. We think it would be great to have Maverick somewhere in Topeka, but not this location. It's, I, I, you know, live there a good bit, as many of us professionals do. I'm a licensed clinical psychotherapist. I specialize in stress management. I'd be happy to come give a workshop for you anytime. I know this is very stressful work that you do. But I have spent many days, and I even have, I have an album on my phone. We bought the building in 2015. We've been renovating and improving the site. All of us really take a lot of pride in our businesses, and having them accessible is a wonderful, quiet area. We initially thought maybe this would be okay, but it's, it's become more and more clear that the exit, which is only for all of the cars and the trucks, as I understand it, is onto Seventh Street. There's, we initially filed a petition because we were asking if they could do it and just use Fairlon as their entrance and exit, or Sixth Street, but that did not look like that was gonna be feasible. And what happens, I sit there already at Seventh Street trying to turn left with school buses, that's another thing. The pressure times at this site are different. They're unique because of the school zone. And you're gonna have multiple times during the day that the speed limits change. That's gonna affect very complex traffic signals. Most people, as they go out, I have pictures that it goes all the way up to the church on Fairlon, that the cars are backed up in the right lane because they're getting ready to go get on I-70 and go to 75, go north, or go eastbound. And so, even if you were, you know, cars could be stacked there, and then you're trying to turn left, you're supposed to turn in the closest lane, right? Then you try to get into the right lane, but it's already packed. So, there, there really are some serious considerations of the actual technical, physical space. Also, we have those huge pylons with the electrical wires that probably are gonna be difficult, that couldn't be moved. So, I really hope we could all work together and find a really great place for Maverick. But this site is not the best site for this. We have three mental health facilities on that that serve our first responders, is one of them specializes in that, and it's really not a good space for this particular application. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wendy Farley. I am the owner of Keystone Mental Health, and this is Ludi Sap. She's the co-owner. We are about fifty feet from the proposed location on Seventh Street. I purchased my building four years ago, and it was a complete disrepair. It took a year to restore and about all of my savings to, to get it to where we can open. That was okay because we believed in it and we had dreams of being small business owners. I chose Seventh Street because it's quiet, lined with other family-owned small businesses. It has a residential feel to it. Every night, you can see people walking up and down the street, and you, during the school year, kids on their bikes are coming to and from Landon Middle School. At Keystone Mental Health, we specialize in the treatment of trauma. We have six-hundred clients. Ninety percent of those are first responders. That means our police, our fire, our EMS, our sheriff's department, and our dispatch. The proposed widening of Seventh Street will put Seventh Street thirty feet from my building, the church, Sarah's building, the tax service, and the financial service. I guess we're using five-sixty as our number, which is a little bit interesting to me. But when you look at the site plan, there's two entrances that people go into. There's one that's kind of off of Sixth and Fairlon, the other's at Seventh and Fairlon. All of the semi-truck traffic will be routed out through Seventh Street, is my understanding. I'll give you the five-sixty number because we can't even handle that on, on Seventh Street. That will literally gridlock Seventh Street at all hours of the day. This will make access to my building and the fifteen other small businesses on our street impossible to reach. This will not only make it a nightmare to get to and from our, our buildings, but it will be impossible to do the kind of therapy we do. This will devastate our build, our, our practice, excuse me. Semi-trucks are loud. Their brakes are loud, their engines are loud, and as it is, the, the garbage trucks vibrate our building. Having five-hundred-and-sixty trucks pass by our building every day will be, I mean, we cannot do our work. Even with posted signage, I can't imagine that people will not miss their exits and entrances and end up in our parking lots trying to turn around. If you turn out of the gas station right to the north, you'll end up in a residential neighborhood that's probably less than a mile down the road. That will be catastrophic because they don't have sidewalks, much like we don't have sidewalks. There, the streets are lined with cars, and there's kids all over in this neighborhood. I don't know where this one, one pedestrian number was found, but it's wrong. Truck stops are well documented for their crime. That includes theft, drug, and sex trafficking. We have Landon Middle School in the area. We have Florence Crittendon, who stands with us, who serves high-risk youth. We have Cospers, who serves developmentally disabled people in this area. Placing a truck stop near these vulnerable places or population is reckless. Also, crime isn't gonna stay isolated to Maverick Station. It's gonna bleed over into our properties, and we're gonna have big problems. We, there's numerous studies that show that properties adjacent to truck stops experience significant decreases in their value due to the traffic noise, the crime, and the environmental concerns. I also fear having five-hundred-and-sixty trucks pass by thirty feet next to my building will cause structural damage. We have put everything we have into this business. We are not rich. We are small business owners, and we are proud of that. We ask you to please not approve this development and protect our local small businesses. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Claudia Elkins, and I just want to comment on some of the things you've already heard tonight. I live in the West Hills neighborhood, and I know of two kids that ride their bikes to Landon. I don't know if you've been on Fairlon, but when school's in session, parents dropping off their kids and parents picking up their kids, the traffic is insane. And then, if we add semi-trucks to that mix, that's gonna be bad. And then, after work, say, between four and six PM, folks northbound on Fairlon wanting to go eastbound on I-70, I've seen cars backed up on the right lane all the way to Valero, from Sixth and Valero. So, I just think it's, the traffic is gonna be bad, and I think it's bad for that, that neighborhood. Sure, I'd like to see Maverick in Topeka too, somewhere, but, but this is not the place. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Rodney Harmon. Get right to it. Some facts that came out in the traffic study. And back to the rezoning. Mr. Warner, Director of Topeka Public Planning Division, stated on July first that the two-hundred-foot notification radius required by Kansas law was what, basically, Maverick used to notify people around that area. However, Topeka has a different radius, which anything over three acres requires five-hundred feet. So, it overweighs the state law. So, that's why most of these people weren't notified about the meeting, the NIM meeting that they had, okay? And back to Maverick. And back to Maverick's traffic, on their traffic study, on the 7.1 section, traffic study submitted by the applicant acknowledged that the track, that the crash rate at this intersection is above the critical threshold, and we're still going to put 600 extra vehicles in that area. They just said it in their statement. This is all coming from their paperwork that you could look up. All right. Also, in the vehicles that's going to be in that area, we're talking about peak times, we're talking about school times, 7:30 to 9:30. We're talking about 294 extra vehicles, 294 extra vehicles in that two-hour timeframe. This is all their study. This is not me just saying this, this is in your paperwork. 300 on the evening hours, all their study, me not saying it. Table six, which Mr. Hall just pointed out earlier in your paperwork. As far as, someone made the statement about hardship, I believe Mr. Hall made the statement in his slide about hardship of property owners, meaning Maverick. What about the hardship of all these people sitting in back of me that own property that the real estate is going to go down? Everybody knows here that real estate is one of your biggest assets. Why would you do that and make these people's property go down? I live at 16 Grand Court also. Some of this, most of this stuff is in your traffic study, all submitted by Maverick, but there's so much of it that you can't get through it. You can't get through it. But understand that their thing is 400, oh, correction, 4.77 acres that they're developing. This should be sent back, not even sent back, I'm asking you to deny it based on the fact that they went off state policy and not our city code, which the last updated city code was April of 2022, right there on the website. Everything is right here. That's not my opinion, that's Maverick stuff, and was printed on the city website. Thank you.
My name's Tom Tice, and we live on Whitehall Lane, which is just down the road from Sixth and Farallon. And I, I, and I want to thank Mr. Gendaro for his, his material he put together, which is, I, I would like to reiterate everything in there, because I made some of those points myself at the city commission, or the letter I sent to the city commission. It's, and the idea that there is only 560, it's actually 1,120 movements through this intersection, not just 560. The ingress egress, and that's a significant impact. Right now, the noise in our neighborhood from just the, if they don't use Jake brakes, but whatever, whatever brakes they do use down the interstate is tremendous, so much so that it does hurt property values. You add that, that will not only have that noise coming, of those trucks coming down the interstate, now we have it, at Sixth and Farallon, that's going to be a significant interruption. I would also, the, the health benefits, public health benefits to those individuals that have special needs, specifically the nursing home, and now I was unaware of, of the counseling service, has a significant impact, and I wish you would really consider that. One thing, and I, the engineer talked about, there isn't a whole lot of additional problems with the exit and entrance because they pretty much, that right-hand lane each side. He apparently has never, never been down that road when there's the backup from the trucks literally almost to Wanamaker, to try to make the exit off of I-70 to go north on 75. Happens every day. And you add additional trucks on that, they won't be able to get on the, the I-70. And, and a lot of that is, we try to get on, we have to get people to give us some room so we can go to the outside lanes to go straight east, because they're all backed up on the, the, the 75 highway ramp. This amount of trucks in there is going to be astronomical, adding to their problem. And then, the, the exit off of, if you're, if you're heading east, you're heading west, there's the, the entrance off of 75 Highway, right with the Danbury exit, that causes problems tremendous already. And you're going to add trucks, more truck traffic in that. It's, it's dangerous, frankly, to try to make an exit on the, on the Danbury Lane. And to add these, these, this truck traffic is significant. My kid, we've been 33, 34 years, we've lived on Whitehall Lane. Our kids walked to Landon, weather permitting, and I'm, I just can't believe there's only one. I, I, I challenge it, that's, that cannot be true. And the other, the, the engineer was candid to you. Right now, the bridge is inadequate with the existing traffic. It's, we add all of this additional traffic, and that's the, the 560, or, or the 1,120 truck in and outs, add, I don't know how many cars to that, in and outs. The, the impact in that intersection, I believe, is tremendous, and we would like, Mr. Gendaro said, additional studies. Frankly, you don't need additional studies. Please vote it down. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Janice DeBoer. We live in the West Hills neighborhood. I want to sincerely thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak tonight. We realize you didn't have to, so we thank you for that. I'm going to start out with what I was going to end with. I'm going to share with you a number, and that number is three. When we heard about this project, and we were late to the party, I mean, there's no doubt, we didn't, we weren't here at your first meeting, but when we heard about it, we too were shocked. We live in West Hills. We live at the front street. I-70 is our front neighbor. It is loud, we can deal with it. But when we heard that it's a truck stop, you can call it what you want, I looked up definitions, all I could on the internet to find an absolute definition of a truck stop, I couldn't find one. It's a truck stop. When, when we heard about this, I looked for data, I looked for the traffic study, I looked for the city report, I couldn't find anything, so I did my own. For five days, I went and set and counted trucks. The governor's mansion has those beautiful ponds out front, so I counted the trucks with a tick sheet. At the peak, for five days, for 30 minutes, I counted trucks. At the peak on a Thursday morning, the number of trucks was 174. 174 trucks zoomed underneath that bridge. I couldn't believe it. If you extrapolate that, you get to 6,000 trucks in 24 hours. Well, obviously, I didn't go out at 2:00 in the morning, so there'd be less at 2:00 in the morning. But I made some assumptions, and I concluded possibly 1,500 trucks would exit with this truck stop. Well, then that, we finally got our hands on the study, and that's too many. And tonight, we heard it was 560. 560 trucks could exit. Here's the deal. The same time I counted trucks that went under the bridge, I counted the trucks that exited. Three trucks, three total. In the entire five days, those 30 minutes I was there, a total of three trucks exited. One exited and went on Sixth Street, the other one exited right in front there, heading west, and crossed the bridge and got right back on. So, that was obviously a mistake. He didn't mean to get off. There was a truck that was heading my way and crossed the bridge and then turned and went west. That was it. In the two years that we have lived in West Hills, not once have I not been able to get north and south to our house, to our home because of a truck. Not once, not once. To bring 1,000 trucks, or 560, into this neighborhood will be devastating. It will change our experience miserably. We are asking you, please, everybody here from West Hills, we are asking you, please do not support this zoning change, and we apologize we weren't here earlier. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you. Doc, most of the points that I was going to cover, as already been covered, so this will be short. My name's Kent Medina, I'm with 5024 Southwest Springport Court in West Hills. And it's a shame that your surrounding picture of the area didn't extend past and over that So, I would have to say, with, with the golden factors, as I've read them, it is possible that, to meet those golden factors, zoning can address the exclusion of those semi-trucks and still meet those golden factors. And for factor number seven, which talks about safety, I'll just say that earlier this year, we did have a fire next door to us, and as I was the one that called it in, I was interviewed by the fire chief, and he did indicate that West Hills is one of the more difficult neighborhoods to get to. It doesn't take a stretch of imagination to know that if you have semi-trucks stacked up anywhere along Farallon or on that bridge, response times can be elongated, and that might conflict with your golden factor number seven. But as it's noted, it is, it is the trucks that we don't need in our neighborhood. No one's going to benefit by the addition of that much truck traffic. Thank you.
My name is Colin Thomasett. I have two children, I live north of Gage Park. Appreciate the Planning Commission taking additional public comment on the proposed Maverick truck stop. I understand that this is a complicated issue. It's interesting that one person's economic development is another person's eyesore and public safety hazard, and I don't envy the job that you all have as Planning Commission members. But do you want to know what has never crossed my mind, will say you have the stoplight at Sixth and Farallon? That we need another gas station, much less a truck stop. We already have two gas stations in I-side. Not only that, I've also never thought that we need another stoplight. Heck, I can see the one at Eighth Street from the intersection, which means that we have three within a half mile already. Do we need another? That would put three on an artillery road that already backs up past Seventh Street for cars that are going northbound on Farallon, that want to turn east onto Sixth, or more often go eastbound on I-70. This development will fundamentally change the character of the neighborhood. Encouraging truck traffic to exit on I-70 at Farallon will clog up our already deteriorating local roads, only to have semis leave on I-70, and if they're traveling east, to massively disrupt the traffic flow that is already problematic during the morning and afternoon. That is not something our city should allow. I can already hear semi-truck air brakes while semis are slowing down to take the I-70 Highway 75 interchange. These can be heard from over 800 feet away. Well, guess what? With this development, a lot more people are going to be hearing those. You might be wondering why. They're going to be hearing the dulcet tones of semis slowing down to get off on Farallon. All the residential areas south of I-70 and west of Farallon, who already have enough traffic noise from I-70, will now have a cacophony of Jake brakes in their ears at all times. I know this because I hear them where I live. So, we're going to pull that traffic back to stop and get off early, so they will get to hear them. And during the day when the kids are trying to learn at Landon Middle School, it's not like they can wear earplugs during class to concentrate. So, this development will not be a quality of life for, a quality of life improvement for anybody in the area. Heavy truck traffic will also contribute to diesel emissions and vibrations, diminishing the quality of life for local residents and interfering with nearby business operations. You've already heard from these nearby businesses, I might need some mental health help after this, we'll see. This includes, as they mentioned in the spa office, mental health providers, financial advisors. I highly doubt that any of them will enjoy the increased traffic and pungent diesel smell they'll greet their clients and customers as they, as they get out of their cars. And finally, let's get back to Landon Middle School. We've heard it from a number of people tonight, where a high number of children cross in front of the proposed Maverick site during school release times. I would encourage all of you to go there during school release times to witness this. I don't know where the number one comes from. Adding more traffic, particularly large trucks creates a serious safety concern. There's also a significant concern about human trafficking associated with truck stops. Studies indicate that truck stops are high-risk points for exploitation, and placing one near a school increases the likelihood of impacting youth and families. While I'm sure that the trucking industry is taking steps to help with this issue, it is one that nonetheless persists in our society, and something that we should not actively encourage by allowing a truck stop in the middle of our city near a middle school. This development will be a hardship on the community and threatens public health and safety of Topequans. This site is not suitable for a truck stop for the aforementioned regions. I urge the Planning Commission to reject this proposal. I'm sure with a little hard work, Maverick could find another location in or around Topeka that would meet their needs, and who knows, they may actually find residence where they want them. Thank you.
I want to echo the comments that have been made about you taking the time to hear from us. I was one that hadn't heard that this was going on, was shocked when I did, and so I'm glad I have the opportunity to address. I think a lot of people have said many other things I would want to, I did submit comments, but my, I think what I'm hearing and my feelings are, we're not against Maverick, we're against the addition of so many trucks into our neighborhood, in an area that can't accommodate that many trucks. I have a hard time believing, and I'd like to see the, the traffic signal warrant analysis, that a traffic signal at Seventh makes any sense. You know, minimum quarter mile is what people like to say. We're talking 500 feet from Sixth Street to Seventh Street, so that just doesn't make sense to me. I think what you're hearing here is, we see neighborhood a lot more broadly than what's been presented and discussed in the application. It's a wide array of people, and, and we care about the place that we live and work. I just want to point out, I appreciate the applicant saying that they really want to be here and be a good partner and neighbor, but in response to the golden factor number one, and this is what they sent to you, the character of the neighborhood, they said that they're known to reflect the identity of the region, they'll even put up images inside their store of our landmarks. That's how they look at the character of our neighborhood. And I would tell you all, we look at it very differently than just putting up a picture of the Capitol in their store. So, I really appreciate you guys taking another look at this, and I think maybe another spot in town would probably be better. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Natalie Kelly-Kendred. If any of you happen to recognize the sign, I see one of the petitions that have been going around, and I took in some information from my fellow neighbors in Prospect Hills, and I was very careful when I chose the title. It's Say No to Maverick on Farallon, because it's not No to Maverick, it's No to It on Farallon. Could Topeka use another truck stop? Can we use another diesel fueling option? Yes, absolutely. My business uses diesel on a regular basis. I use diesel personally for RV and leisure play. I'm not inconvenienced to drive to the other side of town to be able to have that. The convenience of having it two blocks from my house is not worth the negative repercussions that are going to endure. Statistically proven, those things are going to happen. As you come out on Seventh from the proposed site, if you take a right going west, it dumps right into a neighborhood, a neighborhood full of very vast a neighborhood full of very vast demographics. And no offense to the people here, you can see the demographics of the age in the room. There are so many younger families that have no idea this is even happening because they're not in that 200 or 500 feet. And those are the families that are going to be subject of a wrong term. I apologize. I've said a lot. There's been a lot said in this room. And there's a lot of smart people throwing you out statistics, throwing you out the data that everybody's presented to us. There's such a large demographic of people that don't know they can show up in this room to speak up for themselves. They don't have the ability to stand in this room and speak up for themselves. And we count on all of you to make those good decisions for all of us. And we hope tonight that that just good decision is made and just put it somewhere else. Maverick would be a great addition to Topeka. It would be a great addition to my life personally, but not in my neighborhood. Thank you.
I have a couple of things to say. First off, I'm Diane Gendra. And I've seen more than one child walk down the street. There's also chalet apartments that the kids are coming down walking and stuff. And so, this will be detrimental to them. Also, bike riding, like they said before. And there's been a lot that's said. But you have the authority to stay your recommendation until you evaluate the public harm. Because it will be harmful to the children because of, you know, there have been deaf kids in the neighborhood and stuff like that. And we're just a couple of blocks from the intersection. And also, they are stopping buses because of the expenses. So, more kids are walking in that area where all the trucks are going to be and more cars are driving them because parents have to take them to school, to and from. And then, you're not even counting when the children get home being sick. A parent has to go get them. Somebody has to go get them. Actually, I'm a nurse, that's why. And I see down Sixth Street, all the ambulances that come by. Isn't that a thoroughfare for the emergency, you know, to get to the hospital? Also, 10th Street is. They widen that road and there's more ambulance that goes down there all the time now. So, those are concerns too I have. And as I said, you guys have stay to recommend until you evaluate the public harm here. Not that I oppose Maverick in another location. That's fine, but not this location. Thank you.
My name's Greg Allen. I'm a resident of West Hills. I live along Fairlon Road. It's already a difficult situation getting in and out of our neighborhood because of the overpass and the various ramps and the conflicting traffic and the stoplight there at Sixth Street. Already kind of a tough neighborhood to get into. There's not very many ways to get in there. And all of the discussion about traffic congestion, I totally agree with. I think it's going to be a nightmare of traffic that is going to be developed by this kind of facility. So, I'm not going to go into that. But I think that one of the things that hasn't been talked about is we've got this Quincy Viaduct project that's going to be going on for the next two or so years. I don't know what the schedule is for the construction of this. But already, we have, I've observed personally several times where the eastbound traffic on I-70 is all backed up, standstill, to Wanamaker Road. And, you know, getting down that ramp onto eastbound 70 is really problematic most times a day, especially during rush hour. And I think what's going to happen because of the way this traffic is going to be so congested, our main way in and out of West Hills is Fairlon. And what's going to happen is that people are going to be so turned off by trying to, you know, waste tons of time and, you know, risk accidents by going that direction after this traffic congestion is in place, that people are going to start taking the alternate route. And we're just going to go down Danbury Lane into Prospect Hills, drive through Prospect Hills to Sixth Street. And now, you're going to have all that traffic that's currently coming out of West Hills to and from. And you're going to have it treashing through Prospect Hills. So, there's another neighborhood that's going to be adversely affected. And plus, the internal streets of West Hills are going to be over trafficked, trying to get out an alternate way. Ultimately, what's going to happen is that the property values for both West Hills and Prospect Hills are going to go down. And I guarantee it, you know, it's just, there's no way that this is going to not have a negative effect on the desirability of the neighborhoods. That's all I have to say today.
I'll do my best to speak up, but I have airway issues. And having that much pollution, I'm at ninth Fairlon. I know will cause problems. It's just my breathing. I can't imagine the kids were playing outside. We talk about all the traffic, you know, that is definitely a problem. And so, what a lot of people are probably going to do, like most of us do, is, oh, can't go this way. They're all backed up. We're going to head down, heading down towards 10th to catch the freeway on the other side. Fairlon is already completely torn up. That's just going to add more problems. If nobody's been on 75, obviously, I don't think Maverick has. Otherwise, they'd realize how bad of a turn-on. But we're also not talking about what's a little bit further down the road. What recreation is down the road from Landon School? Skate away. You're going to have all these kids who are going in and out of the skating rink who are going to make easy prey. That's all I have to say for human trafficking. I hope you guys do not build this at that location. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tam Vincent from the West Hills neighborhood also. We have a good contingent of people and thank you all for showing up. Just about everything's been said, so I will cut this short. But we've been talking about the I-70 ramp coming down from Fairlon and heading east. So, I go to North Peak a lot, delivering meals on wheels. We timed it. So, if you go from the white line, solid white line, which you know you're not supposed to cross, through the next white line, you have 12 seconds to change lanes. So, you've got the people on I-70 over here in the two lanes. You've got the ramp is totally packed, not only with the Maverick people, but with our ordinary citizens that are coming down there. And we're all trying to, in 12 seconds, get into the lane that we need. It was mentioned about the traffic backup to Wanamaker when it was down to one lane on the bridge. And we heard lots of accidents. We always heard sirens going. It's like, okay, somebody rearing somebody else on I-70. Yeah. So, one of the firemen told me that he would rather run into a burning building than to work an accident on I-70. It is that dangerous. Years ago, Southwest Topeka was promised a fire station. We're still waiting. We heard that it's in the long-term plan, maybe. Right now, our fire station is at Oakley and Huntune. And I don't know if this is up to you, but does anybody know when we're going to get a fire station? And what is the fire protection that? A large filling station that does diesel, diesel doesn't burn, I don't think it will, and need? Okay, Presbyterian Manor, which has been touched on, is across the street from the Maverick site. My mother was there for the last four years. The west end of the complex is medical and dementia people. And that's multiple buildings coming out. Is this fair for these elderly people? Or for that matter, the churches, the residential neighborhoods and the school? Does this meet golden factor five with all the noise that's coming from the semis? Golden factor seven addresses road impact, fire, police and schools. And I'm wondering why none of this has been mentioned or looked into. And I know that the different city departments don't want to get involved with another city department. So, they're hesitant to say. So, is 501 worried about this? Is the fire marshal worried about this? Where does this come from? That's about it. Thank you.
Hello. Thanks for letting me have an opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Gary Hague, owner of Hague Oil Company that operates 17 convenience stores here in Topeka, Kansas. My family's been in business for 55 years here. And we have approximately 200 employees in and around the Topeka community. A couple of stores that you might know. Our Max's Huntune location has the Puppy Pump at 13th and Gage. And Viking BP supports underserved Seaman students up at North Highway 75 and 46th Street. On the traffic count, or the traffic study that I read through, there's approximately 58,000 to 64,000 cars that go up and down I-70, either east of Fairlon Road or west of Fairlon Road. Approximately 13,500 of those exit the highway and head south towards Sixth Street. I find it convenient that we're going to put a median that blocks those people from entering my location at Sixth and Fairlon. Keep in mind, most of these people are on I-70. They're not necessarily from Topeka. So, when they get off Sixth and Fairlon, they're going to keep going south. And they're not going to be able to get to my location. That same traffic study suggests, well, on 7.1, the conclusions, the driveway geometrics at Drive 1 and 3 do not meet all the minimum, not all the requirements, all the minimum City of Topeka design criteria. Now, I don't know if that's minimum for any development or for a truck stop. But if we're not meeting the minimum developments for just a regular C-store, dear God, what are we doing if we're going to have trucks going in and out of there? And then, it references specifically in there, the proposed median extension would convert the existing AMCO to the right, right in and right out. Now, the conclusions in there, and I didn't write this down, but the conclusion suggests that at Seventh Street, there should be a right and a left turn lane if you're coming out, going east on Seventh to try to enter Fairlon. They must not have room for that because that's not what they're suggesting. It goes on to state that what they should do otherwise is force a right in or right out, go south on Fairlon. But they're not suggesting that either. They're basically trying to pick winners and losers. And all the traffic's heading south will basically be, I wouldn't say forced, but conveniently go into their location and would obstruct our location. With the gold rule, the current landowners know and they purchased this land with the current zoning. So, I don't know how they can argue they're being harmed when that's what the zoning was at that time. My view is the decision we're making here tonight picks winners and losers. And I urge you to not pick an out-of-town winner. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for having us out here tonight. Hi, my name is Tony Trimble and I'm on the management team at Hague Oil as well. And as Gary earlier stated, and as the city earlier stated in the meeting, the plan is to extend a median south on Fairlon. And that medium will completely block all traffic from coming into our station. All the traffic that will be southbound on Fairlon will be blocked from coming into our station. The other issue is, of course, this congestion. As we are a neighborhood gas station with four gas pumps, we're reliant on the neighborhood for our customer base. With this kind of congestion, a number of the residents here today have made the statement that they are going to avoid this neighborhood. They will go the other direction. So, those issues, please do not build this medium that will completely block entrance into our station. And please do not allow this congestion, which will drive all the neighbors away from this neighborhood gas station. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Clowers. I live in West Hills. I am not going to talk about traffic numbers. I'm a retired geologist from KDOT. I did research on concrete and asphalt for years. I'm going to talk to you about the fourth power law, which tells you that a vehicle with twice the axle weight will cause 16 times the damage to pavement. That means every fully loaded 18-wheeler that comes down Fairlon is equivalent to 9,600 cars. As a taxpayer, how are we going to have to replace the pavement on Fairlon? And how much is it going to cost us? The other thing I want to point out is that, as my understanding, KDOT does not have the widening of Fairlon Bridge, the overpass, in its long-range plans. It's going to be several, several years before they do that unless it gets forced because of the traffic. That's all I have to say.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for hearing us speak tonight. The only thing I was going to say is, I'm one of the businesses represented on Seventh Street. We know that the revamping of the Seventh Street access, so widened road, is going to take approximately two to three feet of our yard, which is not very big to begin with. So, you know, we have a lot of businesses up and down that street that poured a lot of money into those buildings that were dilapidated or vacant prior to us moving in and fixing them up. Quite a bit of money, as Wendy and Sarah have attested to. And we think that that's going to decrease the property values of our properties. And I think that's pretty much all I wanted to focus on is that it's degrading to some of the businesses around there just to see, you know, some of the yard taken. Plus, on top of that, routing every single truck and car that is coming out of that community store and gas station, you know, along that Seventh Street corridor. And, you know, the noise and everything else that comes along with that. We've already heard, you know, what kind of businesses there are. You know, I'm a professional services provider, tax and accounting services. My partner Joe is a financial planner. Along those same lines, we required, and that's why we bought property there, a little bit of peace and quiet, and this would disrupt all of that. And so, it would degrade our investment and also would hurt our clientele and the business that we conduct. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, my name's Ken Ott. I bring you good news. We've already talked about this. This you've heard more than once. We've covered that. So, I think I'm going to be very brief. I will have two questions for you. As the people representing and protecting the citizens of Topeka, this proposal did not come from anyone in Topeka. It does not benefit, this proposal did not come from anyone in Topeka. It appears it's not benefiting anyone from Topeka. It may benefit somebody in Kentucky. We will bear the burden for your decision. We will bear, you've heard how it's going to affect the community. We haven't heard the cost that we, the citizens who don't want it, are going to be asked to pay. I ask you, how many of you would welcome 4,000 trucks, cars, on a daily basis coming into your neighborhood? How many of you want those cars? How many of you want those cars going past your children's schools on a daily basis? I'm not against this, for them bringing in, the company in here. I'm against the location. There's plenty of places they could go, which would not cause any of these problems, and they should explore them. But this is not the site to build it. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this one?
Hi. Hi. My name is Peter Parks. I'm a business owner in this group that is here to ask you sincerely to consider the impact of this particular, you know, you, it seems to me we can call it a truck stop. I understand there are no showers. But there are going to be a lot of trucks. I'm a psychotherapist and an executive skills coach. Noise is a real problem in my business. I don't know about your businesses. Maybe noise is like no problem, but when I invite someone to feel safe in my space, it's not appropriate for my business to be next to a truck stop. Please understand that this is not appropriate location for this business. And while, as many people have said, that, you know, I went to the Maverick presentation and thought they did a nice job of, you know, thinking about some of the issues, but they weren't thinking about our neighborhood. And I really would like to ask you to turn this down. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? One more time, any other members of the public who want to speak on this one? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, which leads us to, oh, yes?
Mr. Chairman, Nick Jefferson from the City's Legal Department would like to say a few things before you get rolling.
All right.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make sure I understand this is a bit unusual from what you're used to dealing with. I just wanted to make sure that the board, that the commission understands it's your duty, your duty is to make a recommendation, obviously. The governing body makes the ultimate decision. In making your recommendation, you're acting in a judicial capacity rather than a legislative or policymaking capacity. Kansas law requires that bodies such as yours and the governing body make zoning decisions based only upon the evidence presented to the body. That evidence consists of staff reports, previous commission minutes, public hearing comments, and other documents that are part of the agenda. When weighing your decision, you must consider the following, or you must consider certain factors that Kansas appellate courts have established, and we've talked about that a little bit tonight, the golden factors, you're probably familiar. In particular, the governing body asked you to address three of those factors: the character of the neighborhood, the suitability of the property for the requested zoning change, and the relative gain to public health, safety, welfare from maintaining the present zoning as compared to the hardship imposed on the landowner or rezoning applicant. And on a point on that, the Supreme Court has been clear that it is the public health and safety as, as the whole, not just the surrounding neighborhood being affected. And those factors come from a case, Golden v. City of Overland Park. You have essentially two recommendations tonight. Since this was sent back by the governing body, you either send back with the original recommendations, or you send back with amended recommendations. If you do not act tonight, if you do not send it back with recommendations either for or amended recommendations, by Kansas law and by Topeka municipal code, it will automatically be sent back with your original recommendation. This mic's a little far away. Okay. You have essentially, your recommendations tonight are either to send back with the original recommendation that came from this body, to send back with an amended recommendation, or if you do not send it back at this meeting, it will automatically be sent back by Kansas law and Topeka municipal code with the original recommendation. So, any questions on that?
So, whenever we first hear applications, usually we also have an option to, I guess, hold it for a bit or to reject it. You were saying that those are not options available to us?
So you, essentially, if you decide to not act, it will automatically be sent by law back to the governing body with your original recommendation. You also have the option to send it back with an amended recommendation, and that could be however you decide to amend it.
I guess my point that I'm trying to clarify, either a rejection, or as was requested by some folks, the decision to hold it for a month and review some of this stuff to a greater extent. Both of those would be, under Kansas law, considered to be non-action?
Okay. I should clarify. So a rejection would essentially be sending it back with amended recommendation. The recommendation would be from approval to nonapproval. You could send it back like that. If you choose to do nothing, to send, if you can't come to a consensus, if you can't, you need a simple majority vote of everyone who's in attendance tonight. If you cannot come up with a recommendation to send back to them, it will automatically be recommended back to them as your original recommendation.
So one potential amended option that we could send is amending and saying the recommendation is to not go forward, but, but that would be an action?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I knew what options were available. Anyway, so is there any discussion by commissioners at this point?
I guess I just want to make sure I am clear that we cannot further investigate any particular point of this. It's, is that correct?
You cannot. That is correct.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Just for clarification, can we have a reminder exactly what we are going to be voting on The, what you're voting on is whether to approve the amendment to the PUD master plan or not.
For the rezoning?
Amendment to the PUD master plan is essentially rezoning, because the PUD master plan is basically zoning for that site.
Right.
It's zoning tied to that master plan, that development plan.
Right.
And I believe you could also, you can make a recommendation that, that it be revised from what's, what's proposed. So it's not necessarily, you know, I think the city attorney needs to clarify that maybe, but you, you could make a recommendation that revises your recommendation. You can still recommend approval, but with a revision. I think that's an option.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes.
That part is clear. I was just trying to make sure that we all understand that we are here to vote about the rezoning for the PUD. We're not here to, again, clarify if I'm wrong, we're not here to vote on the plan that we have in front of us. We're not approving that. So the, what you're voting on is the PUD master plan. So that detailed-looking site plan that you have, that's a concept plan.
Yep.
And the PUD master plan reflects what's in that concept plan for the most part. And just to clarify, if you recommend approval, and let's say Maverick doesn't build, it's not, the master plan is not tied to a specific builder, developer, operator. It's whatever is permitted by that master plan.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Brooks?
I'm a little curious about the existing zoning. And I understand why it needs to change, but what, you know, it used to be the Holodome, right? It was a big hotel, and it had a lot of traffic in and out. It wasn't trucks, but I'm just trying to understand if someone else decided to come in and develop that property and, and build multifamily housing or whatever. There would be an increase in traffic, I would assume. And that, that would, that, if someone wanted to buy that property now, they could buy it, develop it, and never go through this process for public hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct. They can build it in accordance with, with what's on the screen. Oh, you can't see what's on the screen.
So could you help me understand, based on the current zoning, what, what kind of buildings or businesses could go in?
So, let's start with the C2 zoning. So currently, the area that's part of the PUD master plan now is 1.3 acres of C2 zoning. So what's permitted by right under that zoning is a convenience store, a restaurant with a drive-through service, auto repair, like, like a tire repair shop or just general auto repair. There are other uses, and I can look that up if you want, but it, it allows quite a few uses. There are certain things it doesn't allow. It doesn't allow, say, an auto body shop. It doesn't allow a contractor yard. It actually does allow fuel pumps for trucks, but the site's not big enough to accommodate truck traffic. So that's a clear point that needs to be made. There's no restriction on fuel pumps for trucks, but the site is not large enough to accommodate trucks. It's not large enough to accommodate the convenience store model that they want to develop at this site. So under the current zoning for the, for multifamily residential, that's Zone M3. M3 allows a density of up to 40 units per acre. So you have 4.26 acres. You can do the math, it'll tell you how many units you're allowed to build by right. There are a lot of other factors that affect how much you can build on a site. Building a site at 40 units per acre is difficult just because of, for other reasons, but it does allow that development. What happened years ago is the Ramada Inn closed, and you had someone who wanted to come in and convert the Ramada Inn into, into residential apartments. And it was rezoned from C4, which would allow a lot of development, including this development that's being considered tonight, is rezoned to M3. That didn't happen, for whatever reason. They wanted to come back and demo that building and build a different type of multifamily. So it was, at that point, it was amended again, or it was rezoned to PUD, I think, at that time. And that's why it is the way it is today. It evolved over that time.
So it was already at one point zoned for what we're currently ready to vote on?
It was at one time, yes. Probably six years ago.
Not the entire area.
Yes, the entire site.
Because I'm, I've seen many Maverick locations. They're gorgeous. They're very well-kept. I mean, I've seen them all over the country as I travel. I just, I struggle with the traffic. I struggle with the traffic.
I'm, I'm curious, as it's zoned right, oh, it just went away, as it's zoned right now, not issue, right? With 4.26 acres in three at 40 units, that's, whatever that math is, how many parking spaces is that?
It's, it's two or less. It depends on the nature of the units. The units are of a certain size, it's less than two units per, two parking stalls per unit.
So these are cars coming in and going, contributing?
Yeah, I, yeah.
No matter what, traffic is going to occur, irregardless of what?
Certainly. I think what we can't tell you is what, what the level of traffic is. That's something for a traffic engineer to explain. The trip generation, the trip generation's different. The peaks are going to be different. The overall volume's going to be different.
I understand. Thank you.
I just had a quick question about the comment about using city code versus state code for notification. Can you all speak to that?
Commissioner, what was referenced by the gentleman that came up and spoke was a policy that the city has for neighborhood information meetings. So the city requires a neighborhood information meeting after an application has been submitted. And, and Mike mentioned that we had a neighborhood information meeting, we had about 12 people that showed up. That particular notification was 500 feet for that notification. That's a policy decision, and it's, it gets bigger depending on how big the property is, and so that's why we adjust it. That's the neighborhood information notification. The state legal notification through the rezoning process is 200 feet. That's mandated by state law. We have to do a legal ad in the newspaper, and we've notified 200 feet around that property for the legal notice.
Does anybody know when that bridge is planning on getting fixed?
No. That's my understanding.
I guess with that in mind, is there what can be done to control the traffic and congestion in that area? Is this our best-case scenario overall? Does the proposed changes?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you repeat the question?
Maybe. You know me, I process on the moment. Considering that the bridge is not going to be changing, that the zoning use already creates traffic, what are, is what's in the current plan the best-case scenario to control traffic in that area? Is there any other options?
When you say what's in the current plan, you mean what's being discussed in connection with the Mavericks project?
Yeah. I mean, like, yeah. Is there any other strategies that could be used to control traffic in that area, considering all the zoning that is currently even there right now?
So I think I, my best answer to that is, if they would be funded by Topeka, the city of Topeka, it would be in a capital improvement program. It'd be a public project by the city of Topeka. I'm not aware of any projects in that area. Maybe our engineering staff is. Maybe you're aware of anything? I'm, I'm not aware of any plans to make improvements to those streets right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question. So it used to be C4. Is there any way for the landowner to revert the zone back to what it was previously, or will any change have to route it through the, this process?
Taking it back to C4 would require rezoning.
Any more discussion by commissioners?
Another one. So the negative impact to the AMCO station bothers me. It makes it worse that it's, it's a similar business, in my, my opinion. I know we kind of talked about it last time, but is there any way to not extend the median and not negatively impact the AMCO station and, and make it safe? Or is the extension of the median kind of a requirement?
That's a recommendation that came out of the traffic study. The traffic study was submitted by the developers' traffic engineer. It was reviewed by our professional staff, and they accepted the traffic study, and the improvements are recommended. As far as whether you have to follow that, or if that can, you know, if any part of that can be disregarded, I'm not sure of the answer to that.
Could we ask the applicant, potentially? Do you guys have the answer to that? Maybe? For the city engineer?
I think I'd rather hear from the city engineer about that. Yeah. Yeah, he's here. Let's hear from him. Thank you.
Thank you. So that it would be our design standard for corner clearances, if they're closer than 300 feet, they need to have a median so they restrict them to ride in, ride out. These design standards are typically set in place for everybody. Since I've been doing this, no other developers have gotten away with not putting a median in, being that close to an intersection with their entrance. And with that said, that existing entrance on that gas station across the street is, does not meet those clearances either. So extending that would put them within our current design standards and the new development within the current design standards, because it restricts left turns and the left turns in and out of the entrances are obviously a conflict point, which can cause a lot of additional crashes. Can there be an exception? It wouldn't be my authority. I think that would be something that would be left up to the city engineer, public works director, and city manager to discuss.
Thanks, that makes sense.
Is there any, is there any consideration can be given to change the number of diesel pumps?
This being a planned unit development, you can tie the decision to the master plan. You could, you could require that the master plan not allow that. I believe that that could be a requirement. It's, that's how a planned unit development works. You, I don't know, you change the zoning to fit the situation and to meet a certain objective. If it was just straight zoning, you couldn't do that.
But since the plan is in place...
But it's a planned unit development, master plan, and so you can, you can do those things.
Sure, can we have...
But I just caution you before you do that, I think it would be good to get some input from the applicant about that as an option.
I understand that. Thank you.
Can, can we do that?
Looking at you.
You can ask the applicant.
Yeah. I think it's a valid question. I think a lot of the issues are around the trucks, or at least the comments we've got.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I know you guys are in a difficult spot. There's a lot of facts and not facts being thrown at you guys to make a decision tonight. We are not the property owners currently, so we're working in conjunction with the property owners. Our preference would be to just talk about zoning. I understand what you guys are asking. Right now, this is early. We're doing our best work with staff to do traffic studies earlier than we normally would in the development process. Again, we're not asking for the median. That's being required. It would be impossible for me to probably give you a clear answer on that. You're asking about a complicated real estate deal and a lot of things. I would tell you that as things, as things are constructed currently, as we're trying to forecast, we would prefer to stick something close to our concept. But again, we're trying to work within the confines of zoning here and continue to work with staff as best we can by early forecasting a lot of this stuff. I know that's not the, not exactly what you're wanting, or we're kind of...
It wasn't an answer.
I mean, it would be impossible for me on the spot here, given all that's been thrown out, to give you a definitive answer, because I'm not the person. There are applicants. I'm the applicant, they're the owners. It's a real estate transaction. There's a lot of factors that you're asking to be considered there.
Do you have any existing models that do not have diesel pumps?
Absolutely. Again, to be clear, I'm going to say something that's going to get a lot of noise back there. We're not a truck stop. In fact, the majority of our...
I understand you're not a truck stop.
The majority of our assets do not have this. It is something that we do quite a bit, but, you know, again, there's a lot of factors that go into site selection and land development costs. There's probably a reason that this has failed as a multifamily project a few times. It is a difficult to develop site. And so, you know, for us, this is what we've proposed. It is what works with our business model that we're, we're excited to be a part of and, yeah, I'm doing my best.
You're great. Thanks.
You answered the question. If I understood your answer correctly, you do have a business model that does not have diesel pumps.
I would, yeah, I would say that we probably have as many or more than that don't. But again, everything is, it's all math.
I understand.
You know?
Business major. I got you.
Doing better than me. So, yes. Yeah, and we are, you know, again, we have 800 stores. We've been blessed with a lot of growth over the years. Our offices are in Des Moines and Salt Lake City. And then we hire locally and, you know, contribute more than, more than just pictures on a wall. We do work with local food banks. We contribute a lot with food, like rescue as well as just monetary, you know, again, hire local and we do our best. We're not perfect, I'm sure. Good?
Thanks.
Thank you all.
So with that information, if, I'm not saying I'm going here yet, but if we say, let's do no trucks, no diesel pumps or whatever, it's currently zoned C2, that means it doesn't need to go through the PUD process? Because it can, it's basically a convenience store at that point and it can operate without a rezoning?
You could just make it clear, if that's something you wanted to do, you could include your recommendation that the PUD master plan be revised, the one that's proposed, be revised to take out the truck service, the truck fuel service. That's something you could do with your recommendation.
Yeah.
Right now, the PUD master plan that's in front of you says there's a truck scale and the revised plan removed the truck scale. So that's an example. Even if you approve what's being proposed, you can remove the truck scale from the notes on the PUD master plan.
One of the things I did want to note, just to your comment, part of the reason why they needed the increased zoning was to fit the actual store, correct? It wasn't just about trucks. Why it needed to be rezoned for more land was to fit the convenience store model, not just the trucks, is that correct?
I think you could ask the applicant that question, but I think one thing that's pretty clear is this is a pretty large convenience store. It's a...
Yeah, it's about five, almost 6,000 square feet.
Almost 6,000 square feet. That's a large convenience store. So I believe they would probably find it difficult to fit that convenience store on that 1.3 acre site with, and, you know, the 10 pump islands. I think there are 10, are there 10? 10, I believe, for passenger cars? So they do need to larger. They might not need 4.77 acres if it doesn't have the truck service.
So I would argue if we took the truck service out, then we are being detrimental to the other gas station businesses that are there, because if it just becomes car service only, that's also what those other two locations are doing. I'm saying that if we take the truck service out, we're being detrimental to the other two gas station businesses that are located along the same area. So I don't think that that solves anything and makes things worse. I also don't, for me, feel that this fits the character of the neighborhood. I also have issues with the median problem and if truck traffic comes, that's also going to be majorly difficult to deal with.
Could you repeat that? We want to hear what you're saying.
Sorry. So I agree that this, for me, does not fit the character of the neighborhood. The truck traffic is a huge issue and I don't think it's going to work. And the median hurting the Amoco business is a problem for me.
Yeah. I'd say I'm in the exact same position.
Well, if I understand correctly, the median actually is bringing the entire area up to a certain level in terms of safety, that it's just grandfathered in that it's not there.
Yeah, I'm tracking that. It's just another factor of why this, I think this is all a problem.
So the, so you don't want a median there in terms of safety?
It'd be great if they could figure it out and not hurt the other business. I don't have all the solutions for that.
None of us do.
You know, and I will be the one to speak with the elephant in the room, but what we are supposed to be voting on is a change in zoning. Unfortunately, this intersection is a problem. It doesn't matter what's there. If it would be the amount of multifamily that could be put there, it's going to be a problem. If we don't approve this, somebody could still put another gas station down there. There are already two gas stations down there.
No trucks.
And so, we all gave you all time to speak, so just be, please be respectful as we're navigating the conversation. We did not interrupt you. We were respectful. And we allowed you the time to speak when we didn't have to do that. So I understand that what I'm saying is not favorable, but it is a fact. And so with that being said, I mean, even if we were to remove the number of pumps, I don't think that's what we're being asked to do. Yeah, it may or may not help. The fact of the matter is that area is that area is an issue. Topeka has infrastructure issues. It doesn't matter what side of town you're on, unfortunately. You know, so, you know, I don't like everything about this development. I don't like the inconvenience and the danger in that area. However, that's not what we're called to make a decision on. We're just supposed to discuss the zoning. And regardless of the decision we make, even if we choose to make an amendment, it's not going to affect the issues, because something else could go there with no conversation and be just as much of an issue. So I want to make sure that people understand, like, we read your comments, we heard what you have to say, so us voting doesn't mean we don't care. It's just what we're voting on. So that's my two cents.
Well, I understand what we're voting on, but we do have the option to look at the site plan and make adjustments and hope, I think it's the acceptable level of congestion is that we're trying to consider here. And if you're telling me that eliminating that level of truck traffic is harmful, I guess I would have to disagree with you. I work in that area, my granddaughter goes to Landin. I have been stuck in that line. So I can understand that no matter what we put there, there will be cars and there will be congestion, but putting a semi in front of me is not going to be helpful. So I would love us to consider making that adjustment to the plan and looking at the number of the types of fuel pumps that will be going in.
And I guess my question to that is, how do we determine the appropriate amount of diesel? And I don't know if one of the applicants wants to speak, but like, how do we make that correlation to what's appropriate? My concern would be that we say, okay, we remove two, well, and it's still a problem. So I just want to make sure that if we are going to make a decision, if we are going to make an amendment, that it is appropriate to resolve the issue. So I don't know how we would even go about determining that or even if we have the time.
Well, the people getting on and off the highway aren't going to know if the fuel pumps are full or if they're empty, so they're still going to get on and off.
I was guessing you wanted me to come back up here. I'm happy to speak. Again, we would just, and I know I'm asking some of this stuff for everybody, ask that we focus on the amendment and not our very conceptual site plan. We do our best to right-size with early projections. Again, it is a real estate transaction, so math matters. And, you know, we've done our best to, what we feel, right-size this for the traffic in the area and the usage. I'm uncomfortable giving you a number. Again, any adjustments that we make here impact the property owners as much as it impacts us, because it is a real estate deal. And, you know, limiting or killing the ability to operate the businesses laid out potentially harms that deal, which is, again, everyone's right. I understand that. I appreciate the point you were making earlier about the median. It harms our business too. We'd rather not have one. But I'm pretty sure and staff could share that just about anything that goes in there is going to put that median. We just get to foot the bill for everybody. And again, to this point, all the other projects that have been asked to develop in that area in the last few years have asked for significant taxpayer contributions and we're doing it on our own. Again, doing our best to be of benefit. I would, again, ask that we just focus on the, on the PUD. I know that's impossible, but I have to do it. And, yeah, happy to keep answering whatever I can, but it is a real estate transaction that every decision here matters, you know?
Do you all have any data that communicates how many more trucks come per diesel station?
We do have a lot of proprietary projections. You know, we know what we plan on drawing, which is why we project the size that we do and put in what we install. Again, we're, we do have some massive outlets. We have one in North Las Vegas that we keep adding to. It is, it is for that type of use mainly. And we put more lanes there because there's more of those customers. We know what the size is here. We've not pushed back, we've agreed with staff on leaving some of that land in the back as a multifamily, instead of asking to amend the whole site. We feel very comfortable that we've appropriately sized it for what's needed for the area to be, again, what's appropriate for the area.
Thank you.
Again, thank you.
I would say that I don't, I don't necessarily know what the appropriate restriction would be, and I'm not opposed to it. I would say if there was a restriction, maybe prohibiting them from making more or extending them, I just don't know what the appropriate, if we were to suggest that type of amendment, there's no way that I could agree to something that I don't know what the direct effect is going to be to, how many trucks is it going to reduce it by? So that's our thoughts.
I mean, I guess they based it, they based the number of trucks on some number. Did it have anything to do with the amount? What is that number based on? How did they come to that number?
I think you have to ask them, but I think...
Well, yeah, yeah, city guy.
But one way...
The city guy's...
It might, it might be as simple as, if I could just finish real quick, one point. If there are, there's a service for five trucks and that generates X amount of traffic, perhaps reducing that by X number of pumps and islands would reduce the traffic by a proportionate amount. And that might be an oversimplification.
I mean, it's algebra and I'm not good at it, but it feels like that would be appropriate.
I was just going to say what Mike said, that I think you could prorate it based on peak hour, 70 trucks divided by five fuel stations and subtract it, just whatever that equals. And whatever level of trucks you're comfortable with going through there, you know?
Did that answer? So if I'm understanding you correctly, which is for clarification purposes, if the number of pumps is reduced, there is some X factor number of trucks reduced, is that correct?
Theoretically.
Theoretically, okay. Theoretically, and that's a solid answer. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Using that thought line, I would say it's 14 trucks per pump. However, you know, as traffic, nothing's necessarily fully determined, but...
Thank you.
My concern was that, which I understand the math, it makes sense, but let's say you have one pump. It's always going to be full, there's always going to be people waiting, the trucks are going to turn and they're going to say, oh, there's a line out to the road, and so they're going to keep going. I mean, to me, I'm, you know, I'm just processing this verbally, but I'm, to me, it's either some or none, because a little sum means more problems. Um, because a little sum means more problems. It either needs to be what they proposed or none. This is just the logic I'm following because, um, I, I think changing the amount doesn't really change much for us.
Yeah.
Any more discussion by commissioners? And I'd be looking for some sort of a motion.
Well, I mean, I'll make the motion. We'll see. But I motion to approve the rezoning with whatever we previously stated at this point. Sorry, my brain is a little blank on the exact verbiage, but, um, yes.
All right. Is there a second for that motion?
The motion, um, which hasn't been seconded yet, but the motion was essentially to, uh, re-recommend that this be adopted, which I have a question if we get to the point of having a second, but, um, the next step is to see if there is indeed a second.
Not seeing a second. So is there some other motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I think it's worth giving city council something different, and I agree with where you're heading, but, well, at least give them something different. So I'll make the motion to approve as recommended with the, um, with the change to take out the, the truck diesel pumps. I mean, I don't want to say no diesel pumps. Um, you know, you'd have diesel pumps on the car side, but the truck island and whatever special technical way we need to say that, but hopefully everybody understands what I'm trying to say.
Like no semi truck traffic?
Yeah, no semi truck. Um, I think that at least gives council something different and, um, uh, Maverick may not want to do it, and I understand that, but I think we got to do something, so.
I would second, uh, taking away the semi.
All right. So the motion is.
Yeah. If I may, before there's a vote, I understand there's been a motion with an amendment. I would like a little more discussion and articulate the reason for this amendment and get that on record. It's important, your decision cannot be based on anything arbitrary or capricious. It has to be reasonably objective. So I would ask, as a favor, it's legal.
For me, it's the traffic. It's, there's just, there's too much here in the traffic study that is showing that it's, the, the area's not ready for it. The bridge isn't ready for it. The traffic that's already there, I do live in the area, or I did live in the area. The, the traffic is not ready for it, or the roads are not ready for it, excuse me. So that, that's my objection to the original.
Um, so for our discussion, uh, just a few things that I wrote down. I think, uh, you know, as reasonable as it can be, um, the, the truck breaks negatively in fact, impacting the cardiovascular. I, I didn't understand exactly what was said, and I didn't get through the whole report. Um, part of, part of my hope was we could delay it a month, but we can't, so, um, whether that's true or not, um, I, I think it's, uh, worth, worth mentioning. Um, backing up of traffic, uh, going northbound on I-70 as they are heading eastbound on I-70. Um, I think when we look at, at least when we looked at it last time, I was looking at the neighborhood with, with more of a microscope, and tonight helped me see that's, the, the neighborhood is, is wider, uh, and there's, there's so many things going on with the Sixth and Fair Lawn and the, um, and the bridge and, and the, you know, the, the 75 Highway interchange. Um, I think there's just more complexity there. Um, the, um, then the last one, which I think is a real, real issue is, uh, truck traffic backing up on Seventh Street. I think that is going to happen, um, and I think it is going to negatively impact the businesses to the south of the property. Um, and so I, that's, that's part of my goal was removing the truck traffic. To me, simplifies a lot of the issues.
Do you need more than that?
No, I appreciate that. Just clarification. I'm not taking a side one way or the other. I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I was also going to add, uh, one of the comments that I found particular compelling was, um, the comment about the extent of road damage that semis cause that is not as, um, seen with personal vehicles. Uh, I know that semis can get into neighborhood streets and that causes plenty of issues, and I wish that there was a magic wand that we could wave to help prevent that. I know that that's particularly, um, challenging to implement with drivers who by definition are probably less familiar with the area, but that I found particularly compelling.
Um, and I just want to make this comment more so for the record. I don't disagree with the concerns about traffic. I think it's a problem. Um, the reason why, and, and I have family members, I go to Landin. My mother doesn't live too far from the area. Um, the reason why I'm still for moving forward with the rezoning mainly is because I feel like it's going to be a problem no matter what. And so if we say no to this, it's still going to go forward. So it's not because I don't care or I don't have compassion. I just don't see whatever building or structure goes there is going to be a problem. If there's no semis, it's still going to be a major problem with traffic. Um, if this doesn't go there and something else goes there, it's still going to be a major problem. So I just wanted to have that for the record.
For the record, I agree with you that no matter what goes there, I don't think they're comprehending the fact that anyone develops this property, you're going to have so much more traffic in this area. But I think eliminating one type of vehicle might be helpful considering the turns in the area and how you try to get on it anywhere in that little square. Um, but I, I agree with you 100% no matter what, that anybody who develops this is, there will be traffic in the area and you will not avoid it. So just saying that out loud for the record.
All right. Any other comments on the motion? Not seeing any. So for myself, I just want to clarify the motion as it currently stands is to recommend it, um, but without the diesel fueling stations that target semi trucks.
Hang on, because there's a truck scale in there too.
Well.
So, uh, truck traffic is.
Yeah.
Well, they're suggesting in their plan to remove it, but we have to actually state it to eliminate any truck traffic.
All right. So, um, then would that be a friendly amendment to the motion?
Oh, yeah.
All right. So then the motion now would be to recommend that we allow a PUD that permits the recommendations in the staff report, except no, uh, weigh station and no diesel fueling stations that are targeted towards semi trucks.
Correct.
Am I missing anything?
Yeah.
So this is, uh, my question more so is, after we vote, this would just go back to council? Okay.
Yeah. If the I's, uh, have a majority, then yeah, it would go back to council. All right. Seen, no more discussion on the motion. I think we're ready for a vote. Oh, yes.
My suggestion is just take diesel out of your motion.
So.
But.
So.
You were saying eliminate the diesel pumps that are for semi trucks.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. So just say we recommend the PUD as the, it stands with the amendments of no weigh station and no fuel pumps targeted towards semis.
Yeah, or.
Taking away the.
I don't know all the technologies, but I think there are some trucks that don't necessarily rely on diesel fuel.
Yeah, all right.
Some semi trucks.
Yeah.
That's true.
All right.
But, yeah.
All right.
Limit the size of vehicles.
Yes.
Right, I know.
All right. I believe we're good for a vote, bud.
Nay.
Mr. Mock?
Wait, what are we voting?
So the vote would be to send, um, a recommendation to the state council to approve the PUD with the amendments of no, um, station to weigh semi trucks and no fueling stations regardless of fuel type that are targeted towards semi trucks.
Yes, that's fine. Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Hannah, you said nay, right?
That's correct. Sorry.
Ms. Pearson?
Uh, yay.
Mr. Nager?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yay.
Ms. Herron?
So if we're saying nay, we're saying nay to the project as a whole. Okay, so yay. Yes, yes.
Nobody does it.
No, no. You are saying nay to the amended recommendation.
Oh, okay. So if I say, so if I say nay, I am saying no to the recommendation of the, the amendment.
The, the motion is essentially to amend the original recommendation that was approved from this body.
Okay.
A yay means you agree with the amendment. A nay means you do not agree with the amendment.
Okay, nay.
Yay.
Mr. Lally?
Yay.
Motion with the amendment.
Did you?
Mr. Brooks, did I skip you?
Nope, I said yay.
Yeah, I got six too. I just know how to word it for the record, but it passes with the amendment.
All right. We are just going to let the room clear of folks who, uh, were here for the last item.
Like, I like. Yeah.
All right, still got two more things. I believe that we are ready for the next item, which is kind of the next two items. My understanding is that the next two items are wrapped up into one, um, staff presentation. Those are both about the Monroe School Overlay District. So I will pass it on to city staff to discuss that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I don't think you're in the mood for a really long presentation. Um, so you've seen this item before, a few months ago, uh, the, there's a bunch of slides that are attached to the staff report, and those are slides from the presentation we made to the Landmarks Commission. Um, so I've taken that and kind of taken some slides out and reduced the text and that kind of thing. So what we're talking about here, there are two things. Uh, a text amendment, amendment to the zoning code that would create this overlay district in code, in the zoning code. Uh, and then separately, but related, is changing the zoning map to create the overlay district on the map as an overlay district. So the recommendation is to forward a recommendation of approval of the proposed Monroe School Overlay District standards and rezoning to the governing body. And there is a, there's some language for the motion on the staff report related to the rezone, not necessarily the other one, but anyway, so just, this is what the presentation consists of tonight, is quickly the process, UNESCO, what that is, the need for a buffer or proposed overlay district, timeline and process. So, uh, we started this process really, uh, March 13th, had a kickoff meeting with neighborhood. Uh, and then another public meeting, you, planning commission initiated it, initiated the, great, the, us drafting this. And then, uh, third public meeting, uh, with the neighborhood, which constitutes our neighborhood information meeting on July 2nd. And then, uh, we're here tonight, and the next step from there would be going to governing body for, for a decision. So UNESCO is the United Nations Educational, Scientific and Cultural Organization, and it has created World Heritage Sites around the world. Uh, these are two examples, Easter Island in Chile and the Taj Mahal in India. So how we got involved in this, uh, Georgia State University has a team that's working on the, on this, uh, World Heritage Site nomination, uh, the serial nomination, and they approached us about, uh, the Brown v. Board site, which we are calling the Monroe School site. Uh, and it's to include the Monroe School in the serial nomination under the theme of the U.S. Civil Rights Movement. So, uh, this site will be one of 10 sites, and I won't go through all of these, but they're, these are pretty prominent. Uh, one is the Lorraine Motel in, uh, Memphis where, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated. Um, one is Central High School in Little Rock, the, the Medgar, Medgar and I, sorry, I can't remember his wife's name. Yeah, yeah, Medgar Evers, but I can't remember his wife's name. But, uh, uh, anyway, the Medgar Evers home. Anyway, uh, very, very esteemed company, I guess is one way to put it. Okay, so in order to be included in the serial nomination, uh, we must have an identified buffer zone with restrictions on its use and development. So this has to happen in order for this to be included in the serial nomination, in order for the Monroe School to be considered in the serial nomination. An overlay district does not replace the zoning currently in place, but instead adds a layer of provisions or restrictions over the existing zoning. So an example would be Landis Zone M1. It will continue as M1, but it will have an overlay with different dimensional standards regarding height building, height and building design. It can also have youth standards, and this one does, what we're proposing does. Uh, so this is the proposed, uh, boundary of the district, and, uh, we spent a lot of time on this. Uh, we're kind of at a point where we can't really go back, really. Uh, so the other thing I should mention is this is fairly time sensitive because they're trying to, uh, have this, have all the, uh, buffer zones in place, uh, by, I think that, I can't remember what the month they gave us, but it's before the end of the year, so they can put the serial nomination together. And so that's where. And so that's where we're at. It's a mix of uses, mix of zoning. So what would the buffer, what would the overlay zoning district protect against? It would protect, in residential areas, it would protect against structures that block the view of Monroe School. It would protect against additions or new accessory buildings that are not compatible with the existing architecture, and new driveways from the street where alley access is possible. In areas that are zoned for industrial, commercial use, it would protect against structures that block the view of Monroe School, unsightly outdoor storage of equipment and materials, buildings and parking areas that degrade neighborhood character. The overlay district is intended to preserve and enhance the character of the neighborhoods surrounding Monroe School. And I think I just explained that. So legal and form uses, this is probably the most common question we received. Land use is rendered non-conforming by the proposed overlay district standards will be allowed to continue with some limitations on expansions of these uses. This is typically how it works. This is kind of the default position on land, on non-conforming uses. This is the way we treat it in Topeka in our code. Existing zoning, what you can see there is there's a lot of existing I-1 light industrial zoning, there's some I-2 industrial zoning, and then there's some M1 residential and M2 residential. There's even some R1 residential, not very much. And that's actually owned by the Shawnee County for the park system. So what's proposed here is that these uses be prohibited, and I won't name them all, but there's kind of a pattern here, uses that are, and this isn't going to affect the areas that are zoned residential, because a lot of these aren't allowed in residential areas, but those areas that are zoned I-1 and I-2, for example, a lot of these uses are allowed by right. So intense automobile uses, like the one we just talked about, a convenience store with pumps, truck fuel pumps, restaurant with a drive-through, auto sales and service. So the other, the other part of the pattern here is that uses that are unsightly, that tend to be unattractive over time, outdoor storage, tow lots, they tend to get worse over time, they just, they don't really improve, they just tend to get worse, and they're unattractive. Billboard signs, billboard signs are allowed by right currently. They have to meet certain standards, and they, it requires another one be removed, but they are allowed. It would prohibit that. Liquor stores was a recommendation by one of the commissioners at the previous meeting that that be included as a use that's prohibited. So some of the other things on here, manufacturing processing type three, so in I-2 zoning, I think it's I-2 zoning, yes, I-2 zoning, that requires conditional use permit, this would just prohibit it. So manufacturing processing type three is, that's like a concrete mixing plant or a Notice that truck stop is a prohibited use on here. Okay, so following uses would be permitted in I and C districts only by conditional use permit. Automobile service type two, so automobile service type two is auto repair, tire shop is the best way to describe it, that's also service type two. There might, maybe there's a, that's appropriate, but as a conditional use under certain conditions. Contractor yards is a principal use. So one thing you see in the area are contractors, contractor businesses, and contractor yards is like an outdoor storage yard. Notice it says as a principal use, and I'll get to that in a minute. Outdoor storage. Anyway, so, okay, outdoor storage as an accessory use. So a good example would be someone has a contractor shop, and they, let's say they are a, oh, they work on highway projects, so they have the types of materials and equipment associated with highway construction. It might be, you know, concrete pipes, could be barriers, Jersey barriers, could be equipment. They could have a shop building, and they could have a storage area, but as an accessory use. So that would be permitted as an accessory use, but under these limitations. Okay, so dimensional standards that would apply that don't currently apply. So a minimum setback of 20 feet from the public street rights wave for Monroe Street and 15th Street and 17th Street for all structures, principal and accessory. So in I-1 and I-2 districts, there is no building setback required. You can build a building at the property line unless it's across the street from residential zoning district. Limiting building height to 32 feet. So the height of the Monroe School, I think, is around 40 some, and limiting the height to 32 would help protect the view of the school. Open storage, so that would have to be screened, and it'd have to be, it'd have to be screened by fencing, landscaping, or other appropriate means, usually a combination of both. So fences, this would prohibit, let's say someone wanted to build a galvanized chain link fence, they want to install it at the property line along Monroe Street. That's six feet tall, or, we actually allow up to eight feet fencing. That would not be permitted under this. They would have to set that fence back, or they would have to use an alternative fence material, like a decorative metal. Freestanding signs, so what this is saying is you would not be able to have the signage you're normally allowed by right in I-1 and I-2 districts, which is 25 foot high, up to 120 square feet. Electronic message centers, half that size. So what this is saying, it would have to be more in line of what you normally see in an office or residential district for, say, non-residential uses in a residential district. So just a, just a more reasonable level of signage. There's not really a large demand for signage in this area, but this would keep someone from putting on a big sign with a message center on it, for example. So just to give you some kind of point of reference here, the 32 square foot, excuse me, the 32-foot height limit, these buildings are all under 30 feet or at 30 feet. These are, all three examples have been built in recent years in Topeka, and they allow fairly high storage, they allow forklifts to go inside and lift pallets off of big shelves. So it's not overly restrictive. So in residential districts, in the residential zoning districts, building height will be limited to 32 feet. That's a very big residential building, 32 feet is a very tall residential building. Also, consider that the height is measured on a gable roof, which typical roof type for a residential building is going to be a gable roof. The height is not measured at the ridge line, it's measured at the average height of the highest gable. This requires that new construction, house additions be of an architectural, architectural design compatible with the existing principal building. It also requires that accessory buildings be compatible with the principal building unless they're invisible from the street. An accessory building should be no closer to the front property line than the principal building. That's kind of already a requirement, but there are some exceptions. This would just say that that's a requirement. And for sites with alley access, vehicular access would need to be from the alley and not from the street. So if you go back and look at, if you can see where that M1 zoning is on the west edge, all those, all those, almost every lot along there takes its access, access from the alley. There might be one exception. So there's an alley that they have access to, and that would, this would prevent them from having new driveways on the street. So one thing we did, someone asked a question at the last meeting, they said, what if someone came in and built a new residential building? What would happen? So we made some minor changes to make sure we addressed that. And the slides don't really reflect that very well, but it is attached in the staff, to the staff report. And what it says is new construct, this is in residential zoning districts, new construction of any principal building shall be of a massing orientation similar to other buildings on the same block, include features such as pitch through front porches vertically oriented windows, and materials similar to those of other buildings on the same block, and have a front setback no less than five feet, no greater than 25 feet. So that was something that was added in the past month or so based on a question that came up in these meetings. That's one reason meetings with stakeholders are great, because they do bring up issues that you don't think about. And so staff is recommending, that's not right, forget that slide. Staff's recommending approval, that, staff's recommending that the Planning Commission move to approve, to forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body for the text amendment, ACCR 2501, and the rezoning to C 2507. And to do that in two separate actions.
Any questions for staff? Not seeing anything. Then I'll take any motion first regarding the amendment to the Topeka Municipal Code. Yeah?
Thank you. So you do have to hold a public hearing, you do have to open it for public comment. Yeah, we advertise a public hearing. You do that for each item, and I should have said that.
That's for both of them.
I apologize, yeah.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, you need to do that.
But there's no applicant step to this process.
No, there's no applicant. We're the applicant, so.
Yeah.
Yes, you do need to open it up for public comment.
All right.
And I would do them separately.
So then, correcting myself, we are all open, a public hearing for anyone from the public who would like to speak on the first item, which is the text amendment to the municipal code related to the Monroe School Overlay District. Is there a member of the public who'd like to speak on that item?
My name is Leon Graves, and I think it's a real good idea technically, and also think it's a good idea to have the overlay.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wants to speak on this one? Seeing none. Now I will ask if there's any discussion from commissioners on action item six? Or any motion from commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Mock?
Aye.
Ms. Hanna?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now I will open a public hearing for the second step of this, which is the overlay district for the Monroe, or for the Monroe School. Any member of the public who'd like to speak on that one? Seeing none. Any discussion by commissioners on action item seven? Any motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Amanda?
Ms. Hanna?
Aye.
Mr. Mock?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Motion.
All right, item F is our standing report from the Committee for Housing. My understanding is there's not a particularly content-based report, but just wanted to throw it to one of you to comment on where you're at.
Well, we met, and with all the public comments and just everything going, we wanted a little bit more time to go over everything a little more in depth. We want to take some extra time, just, you know, cross our Ts, dot our Is, go over all of the options laid out in front of us. So we don't really have a formal report this month, but we did want to let you know where we were. We are taking some extra time and consideration with all of this, with everything, all of the public comment that's come out on it, so we are holding off.
All right. Commissioner Brooks?
I thought my mic was on, so it's going to turn off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone else?
Not specifically, this is just a plug, not specifically about the Housing Committee, but I just wanted the commission to be aware, there is an initiative that is starting on advancing black home ownership, and it is being conducted by Habitat for Humanity. I am actually the consultant on that project, so hopefully you'll be hearing information about the initiative and also the results as to any barriers, which I think that conversation will expand from just the black population to barriers in our community to owning your own home, so.
Is there anywhere we can go to find more information at this point, or just hold off and keep listening?
By Friday, I promise. Or maybe Monday. You can go to the Habitat website.
All right. Now we move on to communications to the commission.
Commissioners, you'll have an agenda for August. There'll be a couple zoning action items and likely a discussion item on the duplex project, something to note, also, the duplex project will also go back to the governing body's Policy and Finance Committee on August 21st. So the Planning Commission meeting's on the 18th of August. Policy and Finance will consider it, or will review it on August 21st. That meeting's at 10:00 a.m. I don't think I have anything else.
Really? How is the revision of the land use management plan coming?
It's coming on hold, so we'll, we're gonna, you know, we were pretty close to having it all put together, but, you know, we've had some busy agendas and some staffing losses, so we're doing our best to kind of catch back up to that and hopefully bring it back in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Something, just figured it would be good to share and correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, but I believe that the code states that the case that was heard tonight for Fairlawn Acres has to go back to the next city council meeting, so the governing body will consider that at their next meeting, which is August 12th.
Yes, that is correct.
What action can they take? Can they send it back again? Your confusion does not.
I honestly don't know off the top of my head if they can or not.
Just need to be prepared, that's all. Okay.
All right. I can't say definitively right now. I'd have to get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, lastly, Amanda just reminded me that she put a conflict of interest form in front of all of you that if you could please sign and get back to her at your earliest convenience, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Anything else? Then next is public comment. So this is for general public comment that's not necessarily related to any of our action items on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak?
And people have signed up ahead of time.
And, all right.
Right.
All right.
That's how we treat the public comment item.
Can you repeat that, sorry?
People need to sign up ahead of time for that item.
All right.
But obviously you can, you all can do what you want during the meeting.
All right. Well, then, are there any people who did go through the signup process for that specific?
I think everybody that I had.
For previous, all right. I think in general we have opened it to public comment. Is that... Is that the feeling of folks this evening as well? All right, then.
Just for clarification, before we go to public comment, I did get some clarification right now, and it's my understanding that it's an up and down vote. It won't be coming back to you.
All right. Then are there any members of the public who have general public comment? It's same rules of the four minutes. There will be a yellow light that goes off for a one-minute warning and then a red light whenever your time is up. All right. Seeing no one. That concludes our agenda, and we adjourn for this evening.